Okay, we already started the meeting. All right, May 22nd, Planning Board, we have a public hearing told that was continued. If it's continued, do I still have to read this? In accordance with Massachusetts Journal laws, chapter forty-eight, section eleven notices hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a continuation of a public hearing on Wednesday, May 22nd, two thousand and nineteen, at eight P M. in the board's select room of Town Hall, six sixty-three Main Street. Bolton, Mass. to hear an act upon the applicant of Twenty-One Century Mill, Main Street, Suite Eight, North Road, Mass. zero one five three two, for a common driveway special permit for property located at Twenty-One Century Mill Road. Identified in Bolton's status map three D as parcel thirty-two, twelve point eight acres, located in Bolton's residential zoning district, the proposed common driveway will provide access to four lots. All right. Hi. How have you been? How have the past six months been for you?
Well, I wish I had more progress before. We had winter and we had spring. And breeding season for vernal pool habitat, which was evaluated by, I'm sorry, I'm Scott Hayes, for set engineering, for the record. So this is Twenty-One Century Mill. We were here, I think, last October, and we had some questions related to floodplain and the characteristics of some of the wetland resource areas out here, whether they be vernal pool or not vernal pool, which we had to wait for the spring, breeding season to evaluate that. It was evaluated in the spring. And those findings were presented to the commission. They had a hearing, I think it was last night, and the commission, I guess, wasn't present at the hearing, weren't satisfied, they wanted a peer review done of the evaluation.
They weren't satisfied, or they weren't?
They weren't satisfied. I, they requested a peer review of the findings, so.
What were the findings? Were the findings?
Negative.
Okay, so it was not, the findings that's not?
And these are done by your engineers?
No, no, they were done by Goddard Consulting. They're environmental scientists, and they did the wetland delineation. We did the survey work, floodplain delineation, of resource area management of our area of expertise, so. So we were here, so we also, we've got septic currents pending on lots two, four, and three, so pending results, lots two and four especially would be dependent upon that vernal pool issues. That would have an increased setback to those areas that these septics would not meet.
Can you just remind me again where the potential vernal pool is located?
Yeah, I wish I had time.
It's in very wet lot, see what it says?
So this is.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, okay.
There's another one. Let's turn your packet, turn the packet, this is bad.
Oh, got it, okay, thank you.
Two depressions.
Okay.
It's basically, I mean, these areas were borrow pits, there was gravel there, it's obvious when you're out there, you look at it, it's man-made depressions, and they have stopped, and they have the water table ish, so they are seasonally inundated with water. The soils are, I don't even know if the soils are really wet, the soils are, beds are marginal because of the result of an excavation. Doesn't change what it is now, today, of course, by laws protection statute, but. There, and there's another one.
These were that house's?
Correct, remember the houses?
Yeah, they, yeah, this right here.
Okay.
There's depression here as well, and there's a little ridge right here, since those two areas, and obviously lot four, I mean, if it's determined to be jurisdictional at all, it'd be gone. Lot three wouldn't meet the setback, it would have a hundred foot, that Title V, a hundred foot setback from vernal pool, so, you know, these two lots would be, obviously, probably not viable if those were determined to be vernal, so that's important. We don't have definitive confirmation from Conservation Commission about that. We have findings from the Resource Area Management, come to the delineation of the wetland work out, and what I'm filing is that we did not find any vernal pool characteristics in those areas, so I think they were otherwise undefined as resource areas.
Danielle, is this source, is that like a third-party source that people voted to do this particular work?
Well, so what they did is they hired an vernal consultant, under the developer hired an vernal consultant to do an analysis, they submitted their findings, the town is saying they want to have that peer reviewed by a third party. Was it okay, I guess, at the Concon?
They, they made that determination.
Okay, okay, sorry, sorry.
I didn't know if you wanted me to speak at all or not, all right.
Well, you were president at the hearing.
I was, I was, I was president and had a few.
Your input would be paramount, because I was out there.
It, you know, it's a lot of what you say, it's, it's a very tricky one. The people that did the wetland delineation, Goddard Consulting, they went out there, unbeknownst to us for the first year of this until last night, when we asked the question, have a large financial stake in the entire project. And unbeknownst to me, until I learned last night, one of the neighbors was able to produce photographs, that before we got in, there was a massive amount of terraforming that went on. They went in, ripped out three to five feet of ground covered in certain areas. We're not sure what got changed, how it got changed, why it got changed, but it was all terraformed, ripped out, they waited a year for stuff to regrow, and then asked us to come in and say, this isn't wetlands, right? So that's where we stand right now. We have a third-party reviewer, we're asking a third-party reviewer if they can tell us, could this have been a vernal pool if somebody didn't come in and terraform and rip all this stuff out? And we'll see what we hear back from them. It was interesting talking to you about it, you had a number of pictures. It's the most egregious thing I've seen in five years working with the town. And again, not knowing that the wetland biologist had a large financial stake, even the Ethics Board have their own thing, they're supposed to let us know that upfront. You butter sniffed that one out. We asked a question last night, it came out last night, saw the pictures for the first time, that there was significant ground ripped up and removed before everything was brought forward. I believe our agent questioned Scott, who was the person who did that, saying, you know, as a registered wetland biologist, you know, you're not supposed to do this, because there were some areas that were jurisdictional. I think he said, yeah, you're right. So that's kind of where it stands right now. We're gonna have a third party, we're gonna hear what they have to say, see if they can tell us what it might have been if they didn't mess with it before calling us out there. And that's why I was, I was coming tonight, I know last year, said, you know, we said wait till the spring, we never said wait till the spring, we said, you know, if that's a suspected vernal pool, we need new plans. And it was a choice to wait till the spring, and asked us to come out and take another look, which we did. Weren't sure, we were kind of going back and forth, that's when we thought it's probably best to get a third-party reviewer, because it's very kind of dicing, it's very, it's a big resource area, there's a lot going on there, it's a very wet area. There are a number of vernal pools in that general area, so that's kind of where we were at, but I was, I'm sorry, I was shocked at the amount of top, like, the amount of work that was done, and then let regrow for a year, and then call us in. I've never seen anything that disgusting. It was, it was really shocking to me, which had reason here tonight, I want to hear what's being said to other commissions here in town, but I just thought it was, I just thought it was unethical and immoral, what I saw.
Thank you.
So is that work that had been done recently, or before?
Of course, where the work was done.
I mean, so this is before you're in?
Yeah, we were involved to sort of the wetland delineation, when it was delineated, that area was delineated.
Done by the?
We never surveyed it, yeah.
Previous owner, or?
No, no, it was done by Goddard Consulting. They did the flagging. We did the boundary work, topography and floodplain determination, and we surveyed the wetland flags, but we don't represent the wetland delineation anyway.
So this is coming forth tonight to just as an update, or we're?
Well, yeah, no, I just, you know, we run the agenda, we had the hearing last night with Conservation, which I was present at, but I got put on the agenda with Erica prior to the hearing last night. I was going to just continue this, but I thought maybe since it's been since October, we go ahead and just kind of refresh your memory on the whole place and.
So is there anything new besides your, besides Goddard?
Yeah, I mean, we, it looks like we still have the same issue of, you know, indeterminate resource area.
Yeah, I would say we wouldn't make any decision until that would, that would be finalized with a Concon.
Right. I mean, as is the purview of the special permit, you know, I can argue that. With respect to the site design, you know, there's, you really, if we continue with the presumption that those aren't vernal pools, I think we're kind of at a pedestrian point in the design, this is what it would look like, if that's not the case. If those, that is determined to be vernal pool, it would, it would really, I think it would eliminate, it certainly won't, if not two of lots.
Question. Because they submitted before town meeting, are they grandfathered, are new bylaw?
They are grandfathered, but the intent of that, my, my belief is the intent of that bylaw.
Was just clarification?
That, yeah. The, the article is for clarification, but the intent, I believe, was always there.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, yeah, thank you.
Scott, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
For lot three, has the applicant made any attempts to pull that house further out of the buffer?
Yeah, well, I, I got this contact to do that at the beginning of the week to evaluate, and I started looking at it, and I roughed out some alternatives to that. It can be pulled forward, we can elongate those trenches against the buffer zone here, draw the trench down, slide the house up and towards Century Mill Road, probably front of the garage, eliminate a lot of the pavement there, so I'm in the process of working on that, and we're, we won't completely remove the house from the buffer zone, it'll be substantially less work within the buffer zone, we're done, and that was something that I was kind of directed to try to tighten that up as much as we could. I didn't think we had a lot of room, because obviously we've got hundred-foot buffer here, a hundred-foot buffer here, floodplain all around.
Can you remind me, so the pad that that would be sitting on is three hundred and twelve feet?
Three, well, yeah, so three fourteen wraps around the tag, the top of concrete for the house is probably three sixteen.
And what did we say that, Ron, what, it was three oh eight?
Oh, no, you want your flood, your flood elevation, what's your flood elevation?
We based the, I based the basement floor on estimated seasonal high water, not the flood elevation.
Okay, what were the two elevations?
Three oh eight is estimated seasonal, and three ten is, is a hundred-year flood zone. I mean, the house could certainly be elevated more, just needs more fill, you know, and honestly, more insurance.
What's, what's the three ten line? What's the?
The three, the three ten is the hundred-year flood zone.
No, I know, but where, what's the topographical map, where would that be?
See, is that dark, is that dark line?
I have a much larger plan here. So this is three ten here.
Okay.
Wraps around here, and then back. And then there's.
What's the, is there a basement?
There, there is proposed to be a basement there.
So what would be the?
I, right out of that, at three oh eight, at the estimated seasonal high water, three oh and a half, so. I mean, floodplain is related to, it's bordering floodplain to a waterway, so it's, it's related to surface water, and how far it would peak, so if there's an elevation that's higher in the flood zone between the floodplain and another area, that area below the flood zone isn't in the flood zone, because it's not contiguous to the floodplain.
So three oh eight is your ground, is your basement floor, three oh eight is seasonal water, three ten is hundred-year flood? With nineteen sixties numbers, or with?
No, you'd have to look at the latest.
It's the latest numbers?
You're thinking of the rainfall data, that's not, that's different. This would be whatever the latest flood study map is.
I think it was fourteen, I think.
I mean, jeez, I wouldn't want to live there.
It just, it's, it's a potential for it to flood. What's the bottom of your septic? I mean, you gotta be at least four feet above your seasonal groundwater, so.
I don't know how that would.
Three, roughly, three twelve?
I believe it's, it's three.
It looks like it's three twelve?
No, three twelve.
No, no, three twelve would be the top, and that's a two-foot trench, so assuming it's seasonal water, it's gotta be six feet below that, three oh six.
Okay, so I'm a little confused. I thought you said three or eight is seasonal.
I thought it was, I don't have the cell testing, you know.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I might have it, but I haven't looked at the septic designs.
I mean, it's, we don't need to get into specifics now.
Yeah, I mean, there's things that you'd like to, us to consider in design, I mean, I can pick those up. I mean, we could, we could have, we could not have the whole basement there, we could raise the basement elevation or floodplain elevation higher, and it can be done.
I mean, so it's just in the regulations, it's such, and so your finished floor elevation is fine, you're six feet above the hundred-year flood elevation, so I think your, your finished floor, you know, three sixteen is, is a good, you know, they, they say it has to be a minimum, usually when you do any building, that's within the flood zone, has to be a minimum of two feet above your, your flood zone, if anything, they want you to be more, so six feet is great, but if you're gonna potentially have a basement that would be occupied, that would not be, I guess, good.
Well, and you do flood elevation certificates, they ask you for highest adjacent grade or dwelling, and if that's higher than the flood zone, it's not considered contiguous.
Yeah, I, so I'm not really talking about insurance, I'm talking more potential for actual flood and flooding, and just the risk associated with that.
Hey, I am a fan of the higher the better.
Yes, so.
That makes everyone happy, I'm happy to do it.
What's the, what's the timeframe for the third-party peer review?
Joe, no, we're still asking the question, because it's easy enough for them to go out and say, you know, it's not showing evidence of vernal pool, it's a lot more difficult when we say.
The research.
Yeah, like, if X amount of, you know, cubic feet of, you know, material was removed, could it have been removed, could it have been a vernal pool? You know, that, we're not sure, so we're kind of getting votes now and trying to see if there are companies that can do that, or willing to do that type of analysis. Our next meeting is in two weeks, and we're hoping to pick a peer review of that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, this is, this is a messy situation. I don't really, I don't really see us, it's not worthwhile us meeting again until we have that.
Yeah, I would say we, we wouldn't want to make any decision until we have a decision from Concon.
Because, I mean, if those two are out, and this other one needs to be on stilts.
Well, yeah, so, I mean, we're here tonight because we run the agenda.
Sure.
We're doing a bunch of things here, and we don't even have the A and R plan.
I would just, if it.
We had, if we had done this in October, we cut off the lot for the rest of the land, but we haven't presented a plan for the redivision of lot two yet, so, I mean, I understand what you're asking, but not that we would be.
I mean, the one thing I would just say, is you go back and if you're looking, you know, for something along here, I would look to have at least your basement at the flood elevation or above it, you could raise it, just have a level below, if there's anything you could do there, I think that that would be.
If you were to do that A and R versus the common driveway, I mean, with the vernal, even if they were vernal pools, could you?
No, it's just a lot, you don't need to do it.
What I'm saying, could you get, like, down in the section one house, far enough away from the vernal pools?
I haven't really, you know, looked at it that way, I, I mean, I think lot three is not really affected by that.
Well, but, I'm saying, could you flip it? I mean, it's the vernal pool over there, and then, if you didn't like this, you could maybe get one house here.
There's wetlands here, there's floodplain here, so, yeah.
It would be like.
Perhaps, yeah, in that area.
I mean.
We should look at this map.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, it's a show, yeah, that's. How far away do you have to be from a vernal pool?
At least a hundred feet.
And what is that on this, on this hundred feet from the vernal pool? Is that, is that this line here?
Well, a hundred feet from the wetland is the, um, this plan.
Are you gonna scale it?
I think it could be hundreds of, not that.
It would make it, well, you could maybe fit, like, right, I don't know where, like, I'm thinking this, like, one, like, right here.
Yeah, I, I mean, if there was a spot.
Depends on how much we allow.
Yeah, exactly, but, I mean.
If, if there was.
I mean.
But let's not design it tonight, he's got a lot of blank work to do first.
I'm just saying.
And, and we're running behind, so.
Yeah, this, this plan seems kind of unrealistic, but, I mean, that's, you know, if you do the A and R plan, you know, that seems like something that's potential, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, really at the point where I can't design anything until I have constraints, so I don't know what the constraints are, as an engineer to, I don't have, so.
Well, can you take it?
Thank you, thank you for the update.
Should we continue, like, for two months, or one month?
What do you think, Erica?
Well, here's, here's the thing, we don't have our summer schedule set yet, so we could pick a date tonight for sure, for September, because we always make the second and fourth. In the summer, we go on a little bit of hiatus, we only do one meeting a month, in July and August, we haven't.
I don't like going to meetings in the summertime either, so.
So, I mean, if, if you're amenable, we could just continue it to September, we're seeing it September.
The second Wednesday in September?
Yeah.
Or could you just, could you just say, we'll continue to a meeting in July, and the date to be determined?
I don't think so.
Or not really, no.
Now, I would have to notify the bidders again and reevaluate.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess.
I mean, I could certainly do that, it's just.
I mean, we're, we're at the beginning of June, right, so they're not gonna choose a consultant for two weeks, they're gonna be, they're gonna be, you know, probably a month to evaluate, right?
So August will be as soon as.
I would think August would be the best.
It's through July, yeah, I mean.
We could do the second Wednesday in August, and then, we just have to continue it, they're not ready, and, what do you say?
I'd rather push it to September, but I mean, I just want it to be.
But, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think it's a couple weeks before Concon picks it, another month, then they need to get the report back and, and review it.
And act on it.
And then you're gonna have to, yeah, they'll have, you'll have that drawn at Concon.
Yeah, it's probably an unrealistic time.
So September is looking, you know.
So, yeah, September eleventh, oh, dates.
That's your birthday?
Yeah.
Well.
Girl on.
Guess we can all remember it now.
Actually, I was flying over, that, your team in London, they came back.
Ruin your birthday forever.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have a motion to, okay, move that we continue.
To September eleven.
To the, where we at, Twenty-One Century Mill, to September eleventh? Seven thirty? Do you have anything else scheduled yet, Erica?
No, I don't.
Okay. I never knew what she's done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. See you in September.
All right, next up, we have Wendy Rogers for a common driveway off of Rocky Dundee Road, so.
So if you remember, if I recall, a couple of meetings ago, I had this on the agenda. So Rocky Dundee is an approved, approved road, because the project terminated twenty years ago. There was a common, actually, there's two common driveways off of that public road, and one of the common driveways, there was a, we were holding back one of the lots to ensure that the common drive, driveway got completed. The only thing that was outstanding was the Asbelle. So Wendy Rogers contracted the Broad Associates, they completed the Asbelle, which I have right here, so I think at this point, we can just close out the project, it's been so And then in your packet as well is the restriction.
Which lot were we holding?
Lot two. So actually, her daughter purchased the lot, she's moving back, and they're building a house there. So in your packet, there's the restrictive covenant, and that's where you'll see the language where they're holding back lot two, and then, in order to release it, they need a, a certificate of performance stating that the common driveway was constructed.
And that's what the Asbelle shows, that it was?
Yeah, and so if you reference the decision, it requests an Asbelle, so that is a real document.
So there are no issues that came up with that?
I, to be honest with you, I'm not that familiar with this project, but the plan that was submitted twenty years ago showed nowhere the detail that our plan show today.
But at least we've got the Asbelle down.
We have the Asbelle, and to be honest with you, I have no other leverage to require them to do any work out there, we were not holding bond, again, this is a twenty-year-old project, I think, the fact that they went out and did the Asbelle, this is great, is great.
We're, we're holding the lot, so.
We are holding the lot, that is.
A little bit of leverage, so. But the, the driveway is built in the, in the easement and everything, as it should be?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's good.
How move that we accept the Asbelle for the common driveway off of Rocky Dundee Road and release lot two?
One second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I just need to sign a second?
Yes, please, but can you sign my copy?
Yep. All right, next we have Plaza, so parcel sixty-three dot one, sixty-five three dot one, Green Road. The applicant seeks to move these parcels from chapter sixty-one A, planning board to provide comment to board of selecting and guiding town's right of pressure refusal.
And it's, I don't believe the applicant's cutting in another whole lot this morning, so.
Oh, so these are these lots. So this is the cornfield?
I believe so. From the aerial, it's, it's, it looks agricultural.
The cornfield is on fifty-three dot one, I think, and then thirty-eight dot one is, like, woods in the, isn't there?
Correct, yeah.
There's like, isn't there, there's a conservation trail or something there, or something, isn't there?
Is there?
I mean, one thing we look at is as a contiguous to the conservation land, which it is not.
No, but I just, I think the mere fact that the sale price is like a million dollars, it must not come out. I mean, I think this is a, a pretty easy checkbox, you know, we're not interested in the, in the purchase of property.
Well, it's not that we're not interested, it's just we're not able to do anything.
We're not able, we can't afford it.
So, if this becomes.
So this is, this is a potential development, I've met with this developer, I've met with his attorney, this will become a common driveway with five lots.
Okay.
And I anticipate that they submit as soon as this gets released from chapter eleven.
What's, is, so they know that the cornfield is pretty flat, goes up hill a little on this, on the side of it, but, yeah, I mean, if it was bordering conservation land or something, like, if it was bordering Power Spring, then you, you know, we'd think about it, but it's kind of disisolated.
Yeah.
It's a shame, I like looking at the cornfield.
I think we'll look outbid whoever's buying it.
Huh?
Outbid whoever's buying it, then. Eighty-nine, is that just, just a dead landlot parcel, or is that?
It appears to be a landlot parcel, I don't know who comes to, I could go look quick on G I S, looking at the map.
No, as long as it's not conservation.
Would you like me to?
Worth checking.
It is, if it is conservation, then it's not a bad good.
Yeah.
If eighty-nine is conservation, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I just would like, you know, because we're making recommendations to select me, so, like, to have all the info. Which lot is that, I'm sorry, the cornfield?
Green Road and Harkin Road, at the intersection of Green Road and Harkin Road?
Okay. Do you know where it's located, because it's old houses, like a little, well, it used to be a little greenhouse, but it's redone since, and I think maybe it's the family's building a house right next to it.
I guess it's one of the lots in parcel eighty-nine, probably.
I don't know. Whoever had. Whoever has eighty nine should probably get in on this. Their opportunity.
Well, what we can do is maybe ask Erica in the future, when she prints these, is to turn on the conservation.
Yeah, yeah.
So that way we can.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's like, does the town have use for this, I mean, there's no pond, you know, you know, potential like recreation. I wouldn't say it's really big enough for like some, like, you know, it's not like a hundred acres of trails to hike and stuff, so.
Well, it's ninety acres, isn't that right? Oh, no, that's a lot, never mind, that's, so.
Yeah, it's ninety acres.
Oh, it's only seventy, eighty, okay.
Eighty acres.
I was, I was reading a lot, fifty, thirty, eighty, thirty eight adding together. Yeah. Definitely a lot of money.
Long day.
Besides, I guess, like, and seeing the cornfield, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, the town does not own it, that's the state property, actually, they have put a few parcels over, um, in that area, so, okay, all right, that's it, yeah.
So, yeah, I guess that, does anybody have any thoughts on why the town would want it?
No, I don't know that we, um, recommend to the selectmen that we do not, that we, uh, do not exercise the first refusal.
Yep.
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, okay. Fred?
I'm sorry, how do I use your phone?
So, again.
How's everybody doing?
Good, stuff is.
Good.
So, where do we stand with Brad Hamway's review and funding?
I didn't get to the twenty five hundred.
Not even the twenty five hundred you talked about?
I have it in my pocket.
The twenty five hundred?
I did.
I still don't understand, I mean, that's good. So, just get it before you walk out again, all right, but it's still be more than that.
I don't wear that, but we're gonna run into a time where he doesn't review the bond.
I mean, what do you want us to do, is we need money.
Okay, use the twenty five hundred dollars I'm gonna hand you tonight and pay for the review, and upon the first bond, we'll just take the money to pay the back bills. Like, I, I wanna get this road done, but we're gonna run, I'm just being honest, so, I came with a street light, I reviewed hundreds of streetlights, and they're all ugly parking lot lights, I found one that isn't as ugly, it does point down, but does have some light that might shine out, they do have a different, uh, top for it that won't have the bulb protruding below, um, oh, I haven't got one, but it, everything else looks like something that's on the side of the highway, um, you know, twenty feet tall, or eighteen, nineteen feet tall.
Yeah, this, this is, you can't have the bulb going down.
Right, you have a flat cover, there is one, a model of that, it may be a flat cover, but all the other dark skylights are almost long rectangular LED, it, it just don't.
They have a lot of decorative streetlights, you gotta find your search, I've seen, um, you can definitely get like a fifteen foot, you know, pole or something that's not twenty feet, but more decorative.
The ones that I found were not aesthetically, and I'm sure they're caused of fault somewhere, but.
So, this isn't full cutoff?
That, that's not a full cutoff, no.
They make a headboard, the picture doesn't show it, but it actually cuts off right here, and the, the LED bulb is inside this housing, and so it shines straight now.
Because the bulb, bulb protruding inside the.
Correct, it's got, the light has to be flat.
But they do have the same thing, and that's solar, so the town won't have to worry about electricity or anything like that, and it takes ten hours to charge and runs for ten days on charge, so even in winter time, sure the.
How tall is that?
That was ninety six and eight feet.
Eight feet?
That was eight feet. Um, that's because that's a decorative pole, it could go with a more standard length, a different pole, and we can make it whatever height we want, but, you know, if you're.
Yeah.
Look, I say, I know that's why people were talking about last time, so it'll look good.
I think aesthetics is very important.
That's what I was going for, but it, it looked good poles.
See, Pete, that's about, that's about sure, no, so somebody can just tape some paper over the light to keep the purpose.
Ooh, the paper over the light?
I couldn't imagine what, which would ever do that.
You've got that much time on your hands.
But, um, yeah, that's, that's what we came up with for a light, there is the option for the lights flat and they have bulbs.
So, when you put that bulb, it's.
I mean, I'll say, the, the bulb is not a light.
Yeah, you want it to cut off a light, the style in general is kind of okay.
Well, open up to what other people want to.
If it's not approved, then they'll come.
Oh, I'm just saying, I'm not like a good judge of style, so, as long as functionally works.
Yeah, it's very hard to, it's more about style, so.
Yeah. If it's full cutoff, I can, you know.
So, if it's full cutoff, something in that realm is okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Other, I didn't have much to go on, on what you guys were, what was the plan?
What was, what was the plan?
What's on the plan, yeah.
What was on the plan? And the specs, is there something on the specs?
No specs for the lights in the plan.
Does the board want me to reach out to the design review board, I could ask the chair, Michelle, I'm sure she's got details for sure.
There's no detail on the plan as to what the light is, it just.
Can you send us a PDF, or send Erica a PDF of it?
Yeah, well, do you mind?
DRB, like, maybe they have some.
Design review board?
Sure.
Just heard.
Well, I know Clint Saban's, thank you, so I don't know what, um.
Their light is attached to their sign, and it's, I think it's down.
But don't, don't they have someone that's around the parking lot?
We have other options, if you want to be in consent.
I could take a look at that plan as well.
Or whatever, and there are other options.
Yeah, I remember if, um, one of the churches redid their parking area a couple of years ago, I think they added some lights, that would be the other place that might be.
I mean, I'm, I'm Hudson, do they, their lights are not dark skylights, so I, I don't know.
Well, no, I mean, there's a lot of lights out there that are absolutely not cut off, but, um.
There's no specs on the plan, so I just took what you guys were talking about to go and try and find something applicable, so.
Yeah.
We'll leave it as well.
I just knowing that, um, some of the.
Are you guys good with solar, by any chance? Is there any issue with solar lights, as long as they can?
Well, except for, no, because, I mean, if you have, like, we had ten rainy days where you have no sun, um, there has to be, as long as there's a backup power.
You saw a UV light coming from the sun, like, even if.
Yeah, well, if you see, no, 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 I mean, we, we have the street signs that don't work, and then also.
I would, I would stay away from solar. If it's more safety, you want to.
Yeah, no.
That's fine, I was just asking.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Because you have electrical.
You gotta ask for LED, so I was thinking another good option, so, uh.
LED, yep.
Which is a good option, but.
No, it is, it is a good, you can do solar as long as there's a backup.
Okay.
That has to be.
I was just asking, I figured you guys were focused on the green thing last time, so I thought it worked, um, all right, so I'll, uh, you guys are gonna, you know, you have this PDF, you're gonna talk to the designer review board?
Designer people.
I mean, I, I'm not even sure it needs to be on the agenda, but maybe they can just, Michelle can just give a suggestion, because that's, that's her business, aesthetics.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can we take care of the trees?
Sure. I did not bring the pictures of the trees, it's.
Well, why, we left it because we wanted to go look at it again?
It's okay, just, we can vote on, and then can we bring in the pictures of the other two trees and say, all right, next time, we'll eliminate these two trees, because there won't be double plant, but I do.
So, we'll keep them in.
Keep them in, and then we can say these two.
So, if you wanna actually have to not plant them, then you have to bring the pictures in.
So, just, so just, just approve the plan as is.
The plan that was reviewed and everybody went over, and I'm gonna bring pictures next meeting of two trees.
Which is still saying remove those trees with.
No, it's still saying plant new trees.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, 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 so if he wants, if he wants to not plant them, he needs to give us pictures.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Busy day, I think you're not gonna have it, so, right, or not?
I'm, I'm fine with that, do we, yeah, so approve the minor modification, uh, what do we have to approve, minor modification?
Correct, I have a record of voting next to the minor modification, which.
Yep, based on the plan, dated, whatever, do we have?
Well, it's, it's based on the plans that I marked up from the site visit.
Uh huh, well, how should we reference that?
It's great, you just.
Site visit revised May twenty second, two thousand nineteen.
So, um, I, I had written it two different ways, actually, I had given you the copy that said May twenty second, thinking that, okay, the board could potentially accept these two additional trees. If you're gonna, yeah, potentially vote for those additions at the meeting, then that would, that date would change to April twenty fourth.
April twenty fourth.
Okay.
And I have that in my packet.
Will we approve the minor, um, modification, uh, to allow certain old growth trees, um, in lieu of, uh, new street plantings, as agreed at the site visit on April twenty fourth, two thousand nineteen?
And it's shown with the revised.
And it's shown as revised by.
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do you have, so you have one for me to sign?
Thank you, I guess I could find it in my time.
Yeah.
We're, we're best to the, the handling money now?
Yeah. The easy stuff?
Yeah.
You might wanna take a look at.
Me?
Yeah, I need to, uh.
But they won't release it from the bond unless it's.
Yeah, it's two totally different things.
Brett, so what I'm asking is, I'll give you guys twenty five hundred dollars right now, for the whole sum.
Just, do I want signature?
Correct, yeah.
Just be clear about that, I don't have twenty five hundred, I don't have, so we'll give you guys twenty five hundred dollars now, use it to go towards Brett, to do the review of the plans, and obviously, they did deference, they can go towards the old plans, upon either the next distribution of cash, which we were planning on bringing in twenty five hundred more next time, or bond reduction, whatever happens, first, we'll bring it in, then get caught up, and then just to beat efficiency, and then we'll maintain payments after that. But we wanna move forward, we wanna get it going, and some of the items, like on the bond, you know, like the street treats, we took those numbers from old bonds, so there shouldn't be discrepancies at all, it's just the binder replacements, replacement, things where we had to clean out the ponds and change, you know, previous ponds, those are the new things. Other than that, we took numbers off the old bond estimates, so there shouldn't be too much discrepancy in the, the numbers, we, we took those off the old bonds that we approved that any of these already.
Erica, what are your thoughts on just taking, you know, taking the twenty five hundred and, I mean, I'm saying.
I don't, I don't think it's a good idea.
That's what I was gonna say, procedurally, I mean, because we owe money and.
Yeah, even with the twenty five hundred, it still doesn't get me out of the hole, so that is somewhere on my side.
I mean, we told you last time we would give you money this time, and money next time, and be caught up, that's all I can do.
Okay.
So, um, I mean, I. I don't know, I'll tell you this, that's all, all that's at my disposal, it is, um, I mean, if you guys wanna work with us on the street trees, or for an item off a previous bond, which is where we got the number from, and we can order those and get those done, and take money out of the bond reduction, we can do that too, but it's a step forward to moving towards the completion.
It's, I just don't see this as a negotiation.
I'm not trying to negotiate, I'm just telling you where we're at, and what we can do. It's not, uh, trying to give us something we can't do.
How much, Erica, you asking for above the three thousand? Two thousand?
I was asking five thousand, um, as of December.
For, as a total of five thousand, top of the three?
No, in total.
In total, so two thousand and one.
We have twenty five hundred, not three?
Huh?
We have twenty five hundred.
I understand.
Okay.
I was just saying, because you owe three.
And the, and the five thousand dollars is not gonna get us through the spring, summer, as they finish the work, so any help funds will have to get submitted as well.
Which will have to happen on, on reductions if work is completed, I mean, like we've done it along the right.
I don't know, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Erica, but I'm almost, I don't know, I just wanna get this thing going. I don't know, thoughts on the board? Taking the twenty five hundred and.
What's the worst case scenario, Erica, what, what's the, what's the concern on?
We're still three thousand, yeah, I don't know what it's gonna cost for Brett to do the work, let's say it costs, you know, a thousand dollars, but whatever, I'm just, I'm still in the negative. And I've been in the negative for months and months and months, after asking numerous times for the, for the funds.
I'm, I'm just trying to make things happen.
We had had it, we would have given it.
I know, I know.
That's, so.
But at the same time, you know.
You've also, yeah, you've also known about the amount for a while.
If we had it, gee, mercy.
And I also just might have called the board's attention to something else the town council had provided input on, supplies, maybe about the one point five markup?
Yeah.
Yeah. The town council responded to that, and they said, um. The developer is required to make sufficient funds for completion of the work consistent with the planning board terms regulations, um, the board appears to be set in its rights to take the multiplier into account when granting partial releases of funds.
But then it checks for not how we used to.
So, where, where's the, um, so this, this little breakdown is the, just the easement, yeah, that has nothing to do with. Where's, do we have the overall bond numbers?
We do, yeah.
Which is?
This is one page.
Okay, I was thinking that was one hill, okay, it's not. So, what are we saying then, we're saying, so, the current, what's left is two hundred and thirty thousand?
Without a one point five, without a one point five.
Some of us came up with whole bonds, so some of them, probably already had it, acted it, or we did it, we took.
I don't think that's how we do it, that's not how we do it, typically, the line item is, we don't do the one point five to the end.
Yeah, Phil, because you should just, the line of it, you're already down at the bottom, there's the adjusted total, so.
The ones we took off of, I didn't see that, but we took, there's no saying we took off of the previous bond.
So, the implication of that is what, so we hold two twenty five, or something like that?
We're holding two hundred and fifty four thousand.
Two hundred and fifty four thousand, and their number is two hundred and thirty without a multiplier, so really, we're saying we should be holding three, uh, whatever that is, one, you know, like, four ten? Is that what that's implying?
Three, or.
So, what do we do with that, we need one bond, I mean, how does that work?
Well, I, essentially, my question to him was, you know, would the board, you know, um, be able to, as the work's completed, not release any funds, knowing that we have a one point five multiplier that we haven't accounted for?
So, while you have the right to have the one point five multiplier, to offset costs in the future, this work's all getting done now, there's no issue of this work not being completed, we're asking for it as it is done, not you to hold one point five percent for five years down the road to complete this work, this work's happening this summer.
So, town council's saying, well, we're within our rights to not release bond until he's in line with one point five. That's extreme.
No, not really.
Well, it says you're being right, not that you have to do it.
I, I mean, I kind of, I sort of agree with Fred a little, that we're working on it this year.
Wait, 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 is this not required? Is it required?
I mean, I'm not voting, I'm just giving my opinion.
I, I think, I think we should absolutely put in the one point five, just because there is some uncertainty out there, I appreciate the fact that you're saying it's gonna be done this year, but there was a reason why the one point five is there, and it's to cover, um, in case it doesn't get done, in case it moves in the future, I mean, it's, there's so many ifs to cover that, so, I think it's appropriate to use the one point five, we've used it on other ones, I think to be consistent, we should use it.
So, what are, we're at like one point one right now, really, with two fifty eight, yeah?
Put in the past the work that we were talking about completing, it's five years down the road, not even one C two dollar.
I, I understand, no, I get that, um. That, that's just, that's, that's my thought.
No, I, I, I agree, I think, you know, other developments that have, you know, are, that have gone on short timelines have.
Have still, yeah, they've still let it, yeah.
So, all right, I, I, I'm just trying to understand all sides of this, so, other developments, I mean, do we redo, so we're kind of like redoing the numbers here towards the end, I mean, have we done that where, you know, we're towards the end and we kind of re-figure out the bond, and then?
Well, this is sort of a unique situation where it's a partial road acceptance.
Yeah.
The developer is telling us that he doesn't have the money to actually finish the work, and that he's gonna be using the bond money to finish the work.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we need to make sure that the roads can go through winter, um, so I think it's a unique situation.
We have an insurance policy in place, Cor, I mean, we have an insurance policy for the road to go through the winter, so that portion should not be a factor.
Right, and that's the same, like, we would never release.
Seventy thousand, maybe we're gonna hold it, and we'll see to cover that.
Did town council, we, we have to say this.
I had to have received an insurance policy. I had to have received an insurance policy for the new area.
Which, the whole insurance policy thing, the councils, the councils, town councils say that we had to do that if that's what they wanted?
Correct, so they have.
It wasn't our.
They have the right to change their performance guarantee as the project moves along.
The thing I'm concerned about that is, if we're in disagreement with the insurance company of, you know, Fred reviewing.
Well, obviously we need to agree to the terms of the policy.
Right.
Well, that's where you need the copy of it, so if you'd like to tell them.
Right, and then, so they're just saying yes, you, you know, big picture, that is a possibility.
But what I'm saying, what happens, what happens if their insurance company adjuster comes in and says, no, no, this work's done, but Fred Hamley says, no, no, it's not done, then what happens?
Again, it goes back to the insurance policy and held agreement, the agreement is written out and that's why we need to.
So if it's written out that it's based on our review?
You're sure that we are, yes, it's, it's, it should be written in a way that is, you know, in favor of the town, yes.
Completely in our control, yeah, yeah. If it was written that way, then I, then I'd be comfortable, but, yeah, like you said, we'd have to see that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So what would be, I mean, from your side of things, if we did that one point five multiplier, what does it mean to you? I mean, does this not get done?
It's a big risk in years, I'll put it that way, I haven't analyzed it as how it would affect the whole picture, but those are our costs, that's what it's gonna cost.
Because it'll be like, you'll have to get some work done before you get money back, essentially.
Right, and we can float like a couple things at a time, but I can't float two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, like, that's just not possible.
Well, it would be the gap, it would be. Four ten, it'd be four ten to two sixty, so it would be a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, right?
I don't have a calculator.
I'm just doing them ahead, I mean, so we're saying.
That'd be, be an extra one fifteen.
Two, yeah, one fifteen, so that would be four forty five.
Call, call, yeah, three forty five.
No, oh, yeah, uh, three, yeah, three forty five, and it's two, huh?
Higher math here.
And it's two fifty eight we hold, or just say two sixty, make it even, so it's eighty five thousand. So you'd have to clear out eighty five with the one point five multiplier, so like sixty thousand.
Do you really think I'm having a hard time getting you twenty five hundred dollars, I'm gonna have eighty five thousand dollars to be able to do this work?
Well, it'd be with the one point five multiplier, so it's really like fifty something.
Either way, I can give you ten percent of that right now, like, you think I could really speak that?
Well, I'm just trying to get it all out in the open.
I'm just being honest with you, man, I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
Be a hundred percent honest with you guys.
I mean, that's why I'm bringing this up, I'm just trying to get the entire story out.
The only way we're gonna be able to get this done is by making sure that that bond gets released as the work is done, because we can do it along the way, but we have to be able to make sure we pay it as it is done.
And we also don't wanna get to late summer and have numbers coming a little higher or something that needs scary done and.
I already have numbers from vendors on all of the items that have been done in house, with the exception of the trees that they have and plants, they're saying it's all subbed out, so we already have numbers on those.
Um, just throwing this out there, just wants to hear what the board thinks. Since I kinda do feel like, you know, this isn't a five, ten year project, could we lower the multiplier to like one point two five, I mean, what's the board thing, like, just to, to kinda meet in the middle a little bit?
Before we even.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, um, I, I guess, just throw the multiplier out for a second.
Yeah.
My, my question is, you have a check for twenty five hundred, it's not enough for the.
Cash.
Ah, okay, well, whatever. Um, it's not enough to even get us even to the engineering review that needs to happen. So, if that doesn't, if we're not able to go forward with an engineering review, what does that do to your schedule?
Andy won't start until it's approved, until the bond's approved.
Until the bond's approved.
Correct.
And the bond can't be approved till he.
So if you take the twenty five hundred, apply whatever his cost is towards reviewing the bond. And then we will bring in, in two weeks, another twenty five hundred, and if there's a balance due, we'll do it two weeks after that, but every two weeks.
What's the, what's, this, this tree work, the?
It's just, it puts the ton, I think, in a precarious position right now.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with that. So previously reviewed things are the right of way bounds?
Right of way bounds, street trees, and a leave island plantings?
Right of way bounds, no, I mean, this, this P P T V E.
So the very.
It's just number five, six, and twenty nine.
Uh, this column marks is.
Oh, oh.
What does P P T P E stand for? That's even more extreme than.
I know, usually my estimate is.
I didn't write that, but it's, uh.
Previously, or?
Previously, I don't know.
Per, per.
Oh, it's, per previous town board estimate, that's what it is.
Oh, no, no, no.
Right, if somebody.
Yeah, there it is, cost per previous town bond estimate.
Concrete monitor, right of way bounds, so, is that accurate Erica? I mean, do you know that those numbers are matching?
I even have to go back and look.
So I mean, if you do that, the right of way bounds, streetway. And just water castings and sidewalks. Is that, what is that exactly, water casting?
I don't think there was ever a bond reduction done after the sidewalk got topped, I don't think there's any casting that would be adjusted, so that would be a reduction anyways, but I think it's like four hundred bucks or something.
I mean, but this, so this bond that you've submitted now, Fred hasn't been able to review it, correct?
Correct.
But what I'm saying is, this number for the concrete monument right of ways was previously reviewed.
Yeah, that would.
And if the number is the same, I mean, I guess over time, the cost of materials could have gone up.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you have, you have wages, I mean, there's a whole, yeah.
Concrete stove, ninety bucks a yard, it's not any different than what it was four years ago, but.
I mean, at this point, we've given them a very clear path to partial road acceptance, I've, I mean, we've met with them numerous times. Fred and Andy has the complete list of everything that needs to get done for partial road acceptance, they've known for six months that I needed money for Fred Hamley. The one point five multiplier is our standard, we do that on all projects, this project's been going on for ten years, at this point, I really feel like the ball's in Andy's court, it's really up to him.
Well, it's just.
Get us the things that we need or that.
All the way they paid the one point five multiplier all the way through, we're coming down to the end and there's no time left that's gonna cause inflation to cause that stuff to go up. Fifty percent, it just isn't there.
And I also don't know, I can't predict the future either, and I know that things can go wrong in construction during the summer. Fred, you're not gonna be around, you're leaving in a couple of weeks, it's, it's only Andy, I'm a little nervous, and I, I think.
We've always got contracts in place, but.
We just need to be very careful about releasing the only surety we have left on the front.
Can I say some nerves?
Yes.
It isn't just, the multiplier isn't there just because of the timeframe to get it done. The, the truth of the matter is, if a, if a developer walks away, it's usually a premium to bring someone in and pay.
So, that's brand new company.
And they're gonna, why would they come in for, they're, they're gonna come in for the best price they can get and they'll all be theoretically high, so that's why the multiplier is there, to take over the job, not go the time.
And to add, no, and to add on to that, if a bond were to be pulled or something like that and the town, the town's paid for me on wages, which I'm, I don't know if that's how, that includes that.
Well, we'd also have to hire a supervising engineer, we'd have other expenses that would.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that would, you know, that's what the one point five X is for.
I mean, I, I'm probably, nobody's wanting to, you know, stop you at all, but it's just, like Erica said, there's been a clear path, we've met multiple times. And the way it's being spun is, we're holding you up now, that I don't think is.
I'm just trying to play the opposite.
No, no, I, I know what you, no, I, I.
I'm just trying to see.
Yeah, no, I'm saying the way it's coming across is that.
I didn't represent the use of.
I get it, I, and I respect that, um.
Yeah.
That's what they are, so.
I'm just trying to explore all options.
Not attacking you or spinning anything, I'm just telling you the way that I have to represent it, so.
No, no, no.
All right, so assuming we don't touch the one point five, what about, and, so it doesn't sound like we're comfortable going with this previous town bond estimate? For like the monument, right of way bounds, just to.
Sure.
I'm, well, I'm, so I'm asking the board, like, you know, are you comfortable at all in saying, that we'll go with this ninety six hundred, if they go do the work in the next two weeks, then we can, you know? Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I'm not.
No.
So this, 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 this line item number five.
So he goes and does the work?
Yep.
And then they're gonna wanna bond reduction, but that's just going to replenish the one point, the, the, the one point five.
Well, it's, it needs to be. Well, no, I, well, so first of all, I'm thinking about it more, we don't have money, Fred won't even be able to review it to tell us if it's done right, so that's another roadblock.
So what I'm gonna start with the easiest path, give you guys a picture of the exact money we said we were gonna give you tonight. In two weeks, I give you the other half of the five grand, during that two weeks, Fred reviews this and I still have enough time to start getting this done. It, it's a way to move forward, we still owe money, I'm sure, after that, but by the time we pay the next, I know it's not twenty five hundred dollars for you to review.
But you can, you can come to the next meeting with twenty five hundred?
Yes.
Cause that, then we're potentially in the pause.
What's the date of the next meeting, because they had money on the fifteenth?
I think it's the twelfth.
Okay, on the fifteenth I can do that.
So on, so on the fifteenth you'll have twenty five.
First of fifteenth honor ballot is when we receive distributions and then we can distribute that, those are our tax credits, so I can bring money in, in two weeks.
I mean, that would be good, then we don't have to wrap ourselves in some weird compulsion, you know?
I just wanna move forward where it's approved, where I can get Andy to sign off on it and start paying for the work.
So, I mean, so Erica's on, Erica's on record in saying that she doesn't want us to do that, I mean.
So, so the twenty five hundred you have tonight was from the distribution on the fif, on May fifteenth? So there should be distribution on June, on June first?
There should be a distribution on the first.
Which means we should have it for the meeting on the twelfth?
So you could have.
You should, yes, as long as the checks come in on time, absolutely. It's honor ballot, so.
Okay.
It's never the exact same pay.
Well, I mean, you're, you're looking at almost two weeks after the target distribution date, so.
I don't see a problem with that at all.
So by, by June twelfth, we should have the, the five thousand that we need for it to.
And by then, we should be able to have this reviewed and.
I mean, that sounds good to me.
I will not be the one at that meeting, Andy will be here, but if I know that this is gonna get approved, I'll have the contracts drawn up and ready for him to follow through. That is my goal, my last day is the seventh.
Till what, for, hold on, forever?
Forever.
When you're out of here, and it's just Andy?
Moving to Florida.
Are you moving to Florida?
Yeah, take your job down there, so, it's a good job.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Uh, and, but, my goal is before I leave to have all the contracts in place, have everything lined up, so all I have to do is make sure it happens.
So, just thinking this through, um, so you dropped the twenty five hundred now, you're gonna give us twenty five hundred at the next, in between there, Fred does the review of the bond.
Yes.
But the question is still up there about the one point five.
Question's still up there about the one point five and I have.
I mean, I don't see a question.
Well, I mean, so.
I know you don't see a question, but I have to see, I'm gonna deal with that.
Sure, I guess, so you could take that back as we're asking for one point five, and then you can review the quantities and, and all the rest of the, the stuff, I mean, I'm.
That's assuming that, that Fred is only.
I mean, you can.
The sense, the sense I'm getting from the board is we don't wanna touch the one point five, I mean, that's at least what I'm hearing.
I don't.
I, I do not.
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't know what.
Whatever the board wants.
Uh, I mean, it's there to protect the town.
Yeah, no.
So, I, I think.
Yeah, that's fine, and, yeah, if, if the developer leaves, then, you know, we have to have the multiplier.
Yep.
John Ball, Century Mill, twenty one Sider Circle. I understand where you guys are coming from for this bond multiplier, I find it very hard to come up with any of that money if you can't come up with twenty five hundred bucks for another two weeks, so. I see it in my mind as another stall of a project that's not gonna get done this summer, so we're, we're basically with that decision, and I'm not saying it's the wrong decision. You're putting forty five residents in a position where they're not gonna be able to get this road done, and it's gonna be on our dime in perpetuity because of that decision. And, and as a resident of that neighborhood, and we would have to look at our legal rights, both against Andy and the town, and make that decision when we can take that bond and get it done, because there's no way that that road will ever get done otherwise, unless the town takes the bond, and I don't think you wanna do that. So, so I agree that you want the protection, but you're basically making that decision which I believe is gonna force Andy's hand to not do anything again. I just, I'm just, the consequences of that decision.
It's just, it's a risk, yeah.
I get it, I get it, so I, I know you're in a tough spot.
Cause I mean, we could, if we just lost it at one.
Right.
There could be.
I, yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, in fairness, our, our next hearing is where the board releases too much of a bond, and, and, and we're, we're, you know, and that's causing other issues, so.
And then, and then you're into.
Sure. Right, well, I mean, we, we.
We're, we're, you know, so we're, you know, this, if there's one isolated spot that the, the town has a bond issue, you know, I, I, you know, we might have a little more.
Right, and then you, you set precedence.
Yeah, we don't wanna set the precedence, you know, and every other developer in town has, has always, you know, has been able to deal with the one and a half.
And had no issues, there's never been an issue with this.
Sure, that's what I'm saying, it's not, I'm not faulting the board, I just know what that's gonna cause, we've already been denied a claim for, for tax abatements for, for all the stuff that we have to pay for that other communities don't. And if that decision pushes forward to us to have to maintain the road again for multiple winters, we're gonna look at our, our rights as a community to, to get that cost back somehow.
I will say one thing, had we not increased the bond for additional work, and gone with the bond that has been approved along the way, the one point five would be in place. But you asked us to increase the bond for additional work?
No, we had, we asked to, no, we asked to increase the bond for work that needed to be redone because the project's been dragging for so long.
Additional work, but.
We're repairing things that were damaged through construction.
Sure.
Whether you wanna call it additional work or whether you wanna call it repairing for road acceptance.
Been something that's happened along the way, we've never had to increase the bond for some of those damages.
You weren't, you, you had never talked to us about partial road acceptance until last year either.
I agree, but I'm just saying.
Which is where all of this came up, so, regardless of, at, at, at some point, this would have come up because we would, you would have been looking for road acceptance. And all these issues would have come up at that point, all the rework that needs to be done would have come up, and you would have had to post the bond at that point to do it. So it's, it's just, you're, you're just, it's just showing up now because you're trying to get the, the partial road acceptance done, I mean, so.
I didn't hear you talk about the one point five, that's your prerogative, it's your right according to town council to implement that, I'm not here to argue that. I'm here to try and find a way to move forward, and where I'm at with that is I give you the money, and the next meeting I give you the other twenty five hundred, and during that time Fred reviews the bond and we do what we're willing. That, that's the best thing I can do to move this forward for everybody, and that, that's where we're at.
I'm okay with that plan.
It's fine, I just, I, I'm worried about, um, Andy, exactly what you just said, I mean.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't, by doing the twenty five hundred now, not talking about anything else big number wise, the twenty five hundred now, Fred reviews, worst cases, they disappear and, you know, the town's in a hole like, what, thousand or fifteen hundred dollars? I mean, I'm not too worried about that, I just wanna get this thing going.
I know, I guess my whole point is, I don't know if it's going to move in, in two weeks for coming back and we have a one point five that we're stating in.
I mean, I'm isolating the issue, of course, yeah.
I think it's a big issue though.
Yeah.
Um, and then Andy, you know, he just says, I can't move forward with it.
I didn't hear Fred say he couldn't do it, I heard him say it would be very difficult.
That's exactly what I said, pretty much a direct quote.
Yeah.
I don't think he said, I don't think he said, I don't think you said no.
And say he couldn't do it, this is gonna make things very difficult.
Yeah, which.
It'd just mean working on stuff with some of our vendors to negotiate different contracts on what we had in place last year, so that's.
And that's kinda what I heard.
It's not impossible, but it's not preferable.
Because I do see the, I do see the plight of the residents, and I am trying to take into account the, the town too, and I just, I think, I think, I think we're not putting that, ourselves that much in a situation by saying twenty five hundred now, have Fred go review.
No, I think that's fine, that's fine, I think that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, yeah, I think we're, I mean, there's, the worry about the one and a half X and what Andy will do with that.
Well, let's get to that at the next meeting.
Without him being here, I can't comment on it.
I mean, let's get to that at the next meeting, let's get the bond reviewed at least, you know?
I don't pay the checks, that's not my position.
We're, we're, we're putting that, we're putting the town at risk of, I don't know, a thousand bucks or fifteen hundred dollars, I don't think, you know?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with, I'm okay with.
Yeah, at least that gets the bond reviewed, Fred promises we'll have the rest.
We don't need a motion or nothing, we can just go forward, right?
Um, we probably should have a motion, I think, no?
I think it's important enough of an issue to have a, have a vote, Fred, do you have an estimate at this point, how long it's gonna take you to review that bond? I would just like to have an idea of what that. I would just like to have an idea of what that potential bill could be for the town.
Short and sweet, Fred.
It's on the backside too.
How accurate is it?
One and a half percent low.
You need to ask them dollar wise?
Frankly.
Maybe I broke it down in increments for you, so it should be relatively.
On page two. Oh, or the easement. There's the easement one too, if you have to look at the easement.
This one's a lot easier to look at.
I would hold off on reviewing that one, so we have the money. That, that's my.
Okay, that's fine.
I agree with that.
Yeah, and this isn't, like, this isn't wholly anything else.
We made those changes to it. I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
Yeah. And this isn't wholly anything else.
Yeah, it's like three zones irrigation and changes involved.
Sorry, just one more question. I was, I didn't wanna prolong the discussion, but about the easement, um, that, that's not being fully reviewed by town council because of funding as well?
No, that's been, that's been reviewed.
That's been reviewed and handed to Kai.
And it's been given to Kai.
And there's a separate line of cost associated with it.
Okay, I didn't know it was finished and handed out as great. Okay.
So if you just touched upon it, really quick, uh, town council did have one official requirement.
Additional lease subordination or joint agreement any mortgages of a lot of them?
This is a separate, a separate document provided by the mortgagee.
Mortgagee being, what, Kai and the owner?
Correct. And so that would, that would, um, also be required on lot sixty.
Two.
So what is this exactly?
What are they asking for exactly?
I, I honestly, I don't know what, I can forward, I can, I can send you the.
I don't understand all these words put in this order.
Big base will understand it. I don't quite understand it.
They just, they lead a subordination or joint of any mortgagee.
You're a banker there.
Yeah, I don't know what these words mean.
You want the bank to say, okay, with the easement.
Yeah, yeah.
So, forward it to me and I'll get it ordered out and deal with it.
I'm assuming it needs to come from Kai and from the new owners of lots of future.
I'm assuming I have to go to their, their institutions if they have the resources, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Forward it out and I'll get out and deal with that.
Okay.
That's way beyond my, uh, expertise.
Maybe I'll go over her papers. So what, what revisions did he make, right?
I, I did not provide to you what the, the red line, so that's just the final document.
Oh, okay. After his revisions?
Yeah, they were really minor. So that's what I just accepted.
So it's longer than it was. It's like a table.
Yeah, it's, it just is really minor tweaks.
Okay, alright, that's good. Back to Fred.
It's about six hundred.
Hours?
So we're, we're.
Hours?
Hours.
Six hundred hours, eight dollars a house, it'll be like a dollar.
So it'd be like thirty-six hundred. So we're putting, if you guys run away, we're putting ourselves in a thousand dollar. I'm fine. I'm okay with that.
Please don't run away.
Well, he is running away.
I know, you are. You are. I'm physically, but.
That's not bad. I could potentially cover that with the planning department, but.
Okay, okay.
Alright, so, so you need a motion?
That would be, yeah.
Motion to accept the twenty-five hundred to allow, uh, Fred, him to do his review.
Fred to review the bond?
Um, and then he'll, they'll give us another twenty-five hundred on.
June twelfth.
June twelfth. Correct?
By June twelfth.
By June twelfth.
Alright.
Yep.
We will review the bond.
Yep.
I, I'll just make a motion based on that.
So moved.
Alright.
Second.
Okay, alright.
Hi.
Alright.
I, thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Are you, is this where you dump out all the pennies?
So you're, you're.
Yeah, I have a truck, truck full of pennies. No, I'm just gonna.
You're, um, you're leaving the seventh?
Yeah.
Well, good luck with everything.
Thank you very much.
And have an awesome.
What, what is she with?
I'll still be available by you go.
So you're, you're a con- foreman? Have some job? Working at Disney?
I'm going to build houses on Palm Beach Island, like twenty-five dollar houses.
Wow.
So, you can't turn it down. I'm gonna take three years to build each house.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Christian, good. A whole other level of stress.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, good luck.
That's the one.
Good luck, good luck.
Alright.
You know how to bank check.
I don't typically get cash, so it's gonna be a little uncomfortable.
Do you wanna bring a bank check tomorrow?
Um.
Is there a safe or something? I don't have a safe in my office.
Do you want a bank check tomorrow? I'll get with it. Okay.
You literally do have a bucket of pennies?
No, it's green.
Bring a bank check tomorrow.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, I do that. I just don't feel comfortable carrying that much cash.
By the time I left, the bank wasn't open, so it was, but I could.
Please bring it tomorrow.
I'll be there.
Bye.
Alright, by nine, nine thirty, over.
Um, I'll be in at nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright. Next up Walter Erickson, one forty-seven, I'm going early.
And I need a piece of myself. Listening to me, guys.
I'm sorry, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Very good. Alright, so we have, we asked for the list of work on the bond. So we got, what report should we, so this is the bond estimate. Red is, so what are we, how are we gonna go about this?
Well, so, Mr. Chairman, if you would just allow me, for the record, turning Kevin Erickson, we have the applicant, uh, Built Best Construction. I don't know, I'll see you with it tonight. Mr. Walter Erickson from Built Best. Um, if, before we go through the letter, if you would just, um, give me a couple of minutes for a few preliminary items. Um, I'd like to discuss. First and foremost is a request. I'd like to ask that, you know, we conduct tonight's meeting more consistent with a traditional public meeting where, you know, the materials that we've submitted to the board are discussed between the applicant and the board initially. Certainly the board's consultant can, uh, chime in as needed by the board, ask questions. Or we can ask questions of the applicant. We can answer. Staff obviously can be involved. And then at that point, um, certainly open up to public comment, consisting with, uh, Robert's rules. I'd ask that the public comments all be directed through the chair.
Yeah, you don't need to ask that. I mean, it's, you know, I, I let it go too far, so.
Well, the, the other piece that I'd like to talk about briefly is before, um, tonight's meeting had a chance to review the video of the previous hearing on May eighth. And, um, I guess the, the word I'll use is disappointed to see that after we had left, what I believe to clearly be the end of the meeting. The meeting actually continued for about ten minutes ex parte without the applicant or the applicant's counsel being here. Um, the board discussed the bond, the board discussed the process of releasing the bond. The board took input from residents, questions from residents. Um, discussed whether or not residents could be involved in the application of bond money, um, all without myself or my client being here. So, you know, I'm using, using the word disappointment, but it actually maybe extends a little bit beyond that. Um, so my hope is that we can move past that because we do wanna find a, a resolution here. Um, and I don't wanna get into the legality or the appropriateness of that ex parte portion of the meeting which continued for about ten minutes. It's not an insignificant amount of time. Um, there is one thing I do wanna get clear.
Can you pause for a minute?
Yes.
So it wasn't a public hearing, right? So we didn't close the hearing. I mean, it was an agenda item. Were we out of bounds for going outside the agenda item for talking?
Um, potentially. I would have to check in on that, but yeah.
I, you know what, Mr. Chairman, I really don't, I have any interest in pursuing any issues with this from a legal perspective.
No, I understand, I understand your point of view and you're probably right.
It's, it's appropriateness thing for me more than a legal thing. I haven't had time to even look into it and I'm not inclined to, to be honest. So I wouldn't even suggest wasting the board's time by talking to town council about it. Um, all I'm asking for is number one, that it never happen again. I don't feel like I should have to, whether it's a public hearing or, or not. It's not, it's a public meeting, but I don't feel like I should have to sit in the audience until everybody leaves the audience.
No, you're, you're correct.
And, and then, so the only other thing that I wanna bring up, it, I'm not gonna go into everything that was said. Certainly I have a general objection with a lot of what was said during that ex parte portion of the meeting. But the, the most important thing to me was, um, a comment that was made by a resident here, um, Miss Cilly, who indicated that my client doesn't pay contractors who work on the common driveway. So obviously, at best, that's a recklessly false statement. At worst, that's an intentionally false statement. In my mind, I'm just, please let me continue. It's defamatory, as far as I'm concerned. The only reason to make a comment about that, which has nothing to do with this board or its purview, is to try to impact the board's opinion of my client. It's wholly inappropriate. Um, there was nothing said, I think, by the board at the time, but, you know, it was a quick comment, I will grant you that. Um, every contractor who's worked on this common driveway has been paid. I'm clarifying that for the record. It's gone two weeks unfortunately, until I could clarify that for the record because I haven't been here. And that includes the, I think, quote, the teenager with the wheelbarrow. Um, I don't agree that there's a negative connotation to that, but in any event, I, I needed to get that on the record. Um, I wanted to state my disappointment, but I do hope we can go through this kinda with a clean slate. And if we're running it like a consistent public meeting, I'm hoping the decorum can also improve.
Yeah, I talked to, you know, it won't happen again. I talked to some of the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Um, okay, let's go through it.
So what I did was, you'll see in the letter, the intro paragraph here, all the way down to, um, number four, kind of in the middle of the page, is my intro text, okay? And it just incorporates by reference certain documents. After that, where the heading starts with pavement, that's a cut and paste from Mr. Hamway's letter, uh, which the board I know wanted to see everything on Mr. Hamway's letter directly into the body of this document. The red text is our proposed resolution and in very few cases, we've either indicated that we believe it's done or that no further actions needed. But you'll see in, in almost every case, we're addressing Mr. Hamway's items.
Yeah. So this first one is the water running over the road where it's not crowned properly, right?
That's correct. And that was where we proposed, uh, at the advice of Dushar Middelis, the swale. Um, and I provided a detail of that swale, which I, I know, we, we got it from Dushar Middelis today, so I emailed it over as soon as I could.
Just got it in.
Yes.
And that takes care of the water going across three fifty to three seventy-five. This only, it's only extending this amount, this distance? Three fifty-five to three sixty, or is it continue? That's, do you wanna?
Uh, those are, those are the contour lines, so it extends, you know, approximately eighty to a hundred feet. And that's the area that, uh, Dushar Middelis felt would intercept that water that was sheet flowing.
Oh, I see.
Over, over the berm and across that road.
So it's going from four hundred to, yeah, yeah, three twenty or something?
Yes, yes.
And is that, that's on the as built? I don't think we have it printed out, but the as built.
No, so this is what they proposed.
No, I understand, but the as built said, um, what stretch wasn't crowned properly.
Correct.
Which is that?
Now, this, this is not gonna take care of the entire problem, but he thinks that this'll take care of, uh, the majority of the problem. And, and I think, uh, once it's put in place, we'll be able to tell relatively.
What I'm saying, so is this swale, so this swale doesn't go along the entire stretch of the improperly crowned road? So if this swale, I mean, Danielle, you could step in here when I get into the area that I have no idea I'm talking about. If the water fills up in the swale and it's a lot of rainwater, and I, I guess just this, the problem get moved further along and then crosses the road somewhere else is what I'm asking.
No, basically what's gonna happen is everything will kinda come down, at least the way the contours are, is gonna come down here. Anything from here above is gonna go over the road. Anything from here down that would, that's caught in here would go in the swale.
Go over the road though.
So you're still gonna have a portion that's gonna go across the road.
So that's what I'm saying, so this doesn't completely fix the issue?
No.
The swale shouldn't be longer is what I'm saying.
Well, I guess I, um, I don't, I mean, I.
I don't think a long swale would really, uh, correct the problem a hundred percent because, uh, the water that's flowing on the road where the crown is missing is still gonna sheet flow a little bit. And, and I think your engineer would agree with me, but, uh.
Fred, it's not supposed to, sheet flow, you're saying over the road?
The swale is just collecting the water coming off the side or the thing where everybody understands, not anything has to do with the road. The road is still not, as Walter just said, it's still gonna go across the road as it gets down close to towards the catch basins. From there to the depot, you can see the utility pole station, um, three seventy-five or so down to the catch basins.
And that's bad, correct?
It's better to have the swale, cause you're reducing the amount that's going onto the road. So it's collecting, we're letting the road, what they propose is let the road by itself drain like it's, it's, um, been constructed, which isn't crowned. But you're only having the road section that will be, the paved section flowing across as it gets down towards the catch basins. There is, you understand and the thought that everybody has that water's coming off the side. You're driving on the driveway off the left side onto the road and adding to the amount on the pavement. So there, the swale reduces, takes all that off the pavement.
Okay.
Can I also ask, so you, there are three trees that are noted right here. What size are those trees? And what I'm getting at, where I'm going at, I see that the proposed contours kinda go within where the trees are, so are they going, is this swale going to, I guess, hurt the, the trees that are there?
I don't know, to be honest with you. We'll have to do some replantings there anyway, so.
Okay. Is right.
They aren't big trees.
They're, okay.
No. Um, so this, there is, might be enough room visually to get the swale in there. If not, as Walter said, they'd have to move, unplant and move them back away from the swale, right? Walter's what he says.
So, so this would, this at least would fix where, where the water is actively crossing the road?
We can't say that. No one can.
Yeah.
It's still gonna cross the road. It would be a lot less. That's the, that's the thing. It's, let's say, the, what's going onto the road from off site, let's say off the edge doubles what goes onto the road. They're taking that away, so they're just taking the road and draining it across the twelve feet pavement. It's still gonna go across there. It is no way to say how drastic or non drastic it would be. It definitely would be an improvement over what we've seen from photos before.
And it would, it would probably put it in line with what is on the other side of the bridge where that road is super elevated, to send it across the road anyway.
Yeah, I just, the, the two concerns I have are, one, you've got this swale going through the, what the utility poles.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which I don't think you want to have done. Um, and then just being careful of the, the, the trees if they're already planted and I, I don't know if the condition.
That's that three fifty-five, Danielle?
The, the utility pole's at three fifty-five, that.
Or whatever, yeah.
At three fifty-five contour and then.
It'd have to work around, if the vegetation, the, the plantings are gonna stay, it'd have to work around the plantings.
It, it, it might be, just, this is the plan and, and it could snake its way through, um.
Yeah, I think they intended it as a sketch, so it's not.
Yeah, yeah.
It definitely has to go around the pole. If the plantings in the way, they may have to be, be replanted, moved and replanted. Along those same lines, those trees aren't the size they're supposed to be, so new ones have to be put in anyways as we get further down into the continents.
I mean, just for my knowledge is, um, to, to fix the crown, is that just another top coat or is that a rip up and redo? Just for my knowledge.
It's, it's, I have to say, it can probably be done. Even if you just put another top coat, you still have to blend it into what exists. And it's one of those, how you keep on chasing to try to blend it in smooth, so it's hard to say. And it's one of those, you keep on chasing to try to blend it in smooth, so it's hard to say. It's, it's a, it's, I would say substantial work from what's up there now to, to try to fix the driveway.
And so if we didn't go forward with this plan, I mean, I'm going to have to see it working.
Yeah, we don't know if it's going to.
Where is?
So I guess procedurally, bond-wise, okay, do we need to, do we need, can we release the bond before we actually see that it's working how it should, or do we say, oh, well, they did the work, you know? I mean, it's a patch, it's a patch for a problem, you know?
We don't know if we see if it works, but the problem's going to be, the date's give or take at June 15th, which is fine. But for the most part, we might not have any rain that's going to.
I don't know what that happens.
We might not.
It's, it's.
I know that, but we might.
No, you're, you're.
Talking about going into the summer. So theoretically, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't see it. And so now, do we wait until the fall or next spring or whatever, bond-wise? So, bond release wise, is your thing?
I've reached the breadth of my civil engineering knowledge. I'll need Danielle to give her opinion.
I mean, I'm there, I agree with what Fred said.
Which is?
It, it's a, I mean, I don't think anyone wants the road ripped up to, to fix the crown. So I, I don't, I think it's, we're trying to find a solution to eliminate ponding, eliminate as, as much as possible if there's any low spots that could potentially, I think there was one mentioned that could potentially cause the icing.
And this will, and this will clearly be better than what we, what is currently there.
Should be.
It, yes, it should, I mean, it should, I mean, if it's a foot deep, two feet wide, that's a good sized swale. The, the only question is, is, you know, maybe it doesn't need to go up a little bit more. I'm just, I'm looking at these contours that go towards the road. So if it was, we should start here. I mean, if this went up, because basically all of, almost all of this, anything that kind of comes down here, I don't know, maybe it's, I mean, Dusharman Dillis has been out there, so, I mean, I don't know.
Are you thinking the swale should go further?
I just, I was thinking just to like, at least three, another twenty feet. Just, just to, because it seems like that's where you still.
Up to 365 contour.
Yes, yeah, almost right, right up there. I think that would, because you have a little bit of a gap here where there's still, you're going to have some, potentially have some paramount runoff. So if they just extended another twenty, thirty feet, I think that would be, at least looking at all, on this as-built, that, that would be.
A little bit.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be a, a good improvement for, for dealing with the runoff that goes across the road.
Okay, is that acceptable?
Yeah, we can have them, we can have them on the, to the basic side of mineboard. Almost in line with that shed, just a little bit further.
Yeah, just, just because right here, there's a, the contours are closed, so it just, it came.
Okay, that's good. Next.
Uh, number two is actually noting, noting the above.
Yeah.
Sorry, can I just talk to Erica? If I have to leave, how does that, because there's, Mark had to recuse himself?
It's okay.
We got three.
You still have three, so you can, so.
This is for public hearing, yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. I'll probably signal five, and unfortunately, I have to, sorry, go ahead.
So, no problem. So on the, the next item under drainage number one, we're proposing to add additional stating to the flare-end section to further, I guess, further stabilize that flare-end section that has, that were grabbed.
So, Fred, you had an issue with this one, right?
Yes, and, and he's correct, I did say, I did give a suggestion on stating it. But I want to look at it again, and it's not on correctly is the problem. Simple as that. It goes off at an angle, it's not on as tight as, everything has to be reinstalled on the pipe. It's not, it's, it's going to take the same effort to do one the other. But all the other flare ends, all are straight and flat and lined up with the pipe. That one isn't, it's off at an angle and it's.
If it is, if it is, then.
That's what it is. It's not a matter of, it wasn't put on securely.
So it needs to be taken off the pipe, then?
Yeah, it's not, it's, it's like a clamp.
Okay.
Do you think?
It, it comes around, and then there's a zip tie that has a screw to it, a zip tie. A rod, a threaded rod that tightens it around the pipe.
Those are the, where do you clip?
Right, in a sense like that. So it's not got, put on correctly is the problem.
All right, so reinstalling should be that harder than the, you guys agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is number two, so we, we've looked at, when I think our engineers felt that that was stabilized and functioned as designed, that other flare end section. I think Fred might have just mentioned that all the other ones were.
That one doesn't have a flare end section, that's what I'm saying, that. It, it does not have a flare, it has, rip wrap, but not a flare end section. That one does not. And Greg understands that too, like we talked from earlier again. Greg, uh, Greg.
So there is further action required?
Yeah, there's a flare end section there.
Is that okay with you guys?
Well, Greg told us he was satisfied because it was a rip wrap slope.
They all have rip wrap, they all, the, the plan shows a flare end section with rip wrap.
Well, we'll, we'll do that with Greg.
Okay, so, still in the air? Debris in and around stone wall management areas one and two?
If, if there's any more out there, it'll get taken out. So we're agreed to that.
What you say, okay, so you agree to take it out?
Yes.
Okay. The construction of the swale must be done, the swale must be constructed to size and shape to.
So this is the, just giving one thing, about the debris, this hasn't been mentioned, but I don't know where you stand on conservation, but there's still a salt fence.
Yeah, they, they don't want it, Rebecca doesn't want it taken down until we get a stupid compliance, so.
Okay.
And, I, you have a bond with them?
Yes.
So I guess, I just want to make it clear that that's, it's still, it's not, it's not debris, but it's still a cleanup item.
But that one.
That's part of the conservation.
That's what I'm saying, so I just don't want to let it be, anybody think that it hasn't been taken care of.
Okay, right. Okay, so, construction's the size and shape, so this is the undersized? Oh, no, that's something different.
So, so this particular swale, Dusharman Dillis indicated functions as designed, and so we're not proposing any further widening of this particular swale. There are, I think there's one or two swales that we are proposing to increase in size.
Which, can you point just what's on there?
Do you know which swale it's on?
This is in front of lot three, and there's a stone wall and trees on banking. So you would have to take down some additional trees and.
Oh, please.
Utility pole is down there. It must be here. It doesn't meet the width of it, the eight-one slope, two-one slopes and so forth. And before, when it was being built, I would get a look at the fact that I mentioned it at, in old time November 2017, when they were building it, that they were, the pole, the trees might get undermined. They have not, but been undermined.
They've not been undermined?
No. Nothing's moved there that I have seen. Once again, it.
It, it doesn't quite meet the size hopes, but it, it's a very small area because the crown of the road is right about where that driveway is, right, Fred? And.
Is it high point of the road?
Yeah, the high point of the road, so it, it's just a very small area and it does function as designed.
Are you okay with my consideration?
It wasn't built to the plans. Doesn't mean it's not going to function, but. It was mentioned back when it was being constructed, that, back in 2017, when it was just being excavated out.
Is it currently functioning how it's supposed to?
The quips were, it takes it to the basin, the seven four B, number three, which is down at the end of the driveway on the left.
So it's working?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand this severity.
Our engineers certainly have indicated that it works.
Fred, I'm just trying to understand, is it like?
If someday it doesn't work, it's noted that it's been working, I don't, it, it's working. Just like anything, if you have to design and go on a trap over here, you have to design a roof for six times the safety factor because of snow or wind or whatever. And for thirty years, nothing happens, only designed it one time, so, yes, it'll work.
I, I understand what you're saying.
So, it's not designed to your plans, all I can say. And it's explained to be done when it was being done.
Okay.
My apologies, I need to take off, so, thank you.
All right, so let's go, go on.
On number five, yeah, that, and that's the drainage manhole cover. So when we, when we raise that manhole cover and are able to get a look in there, if there's an, an issue with backup, which it seems that there, there might be, we'll take care of that. We're going to get in there and look at it, but we're, we're going to take care of it.
So, raising the manhole. Okay, so you're going to do that one?
Yes.
Where's the, oh, that's. So is, are the basin changes on drainage, or is that somewhere else?
They're not, what, the, the latest thing about the basin size? That's in his, this is my, he's explaining to my line items, then he has his own from his other letter that was going to be addressed there.
Right, so at the end, and then some of those duplicate a little bit, but, but at the end, I also incorporated just before those extra sure, everything that we agreed to do last time.
Okay, I just, I didn't know what was going on.
Yeah, nope.
Okay, all right, Lom and C.
We're going to do it.
So all the areas, Lom and C. So all report June 15.
And this, this, item number two talks about regrading a swale between seven and 1250, which is mentioned in my letter too.
So Dusharman Dillis will, will stake that out for us and give us grade stakes so we can eliminate the ponding in that swale. And we'll regrade accordingly.
Okay, this number two we talked about, grading will have to be performed?
Yes.
Okay, that's not about the actual swale. That's at the sides, the intersection, this is the intersection of the driveways with, the private driveways with the common driveway. And this is the area that's puddling around those intersections off, off the pavement. This isn't the swale we're talking about here. It says, grading near, profoundly the driveways to allow the flow of the gutter of the common driveway and Cape Cod burn to enter the swale. So this isn't the swale.
Yeah, that's.
This is at the corner.
At the top of the driveway, right on two, right?
Not, not, when you talk, the top of, the intersection of the, their, their private driveways with the common driveway.
Yes.
There's low areas as you turn into them on left and right sides in where water was just puddling.
Instead of, so it's not hitting the swale, is what you're saying?
Eventually does, if it fills up enough and spills over, but then it's puddles up there.
We'll regrade that when we do the swale, where's the swale?
I just want to make sure that it's, that's not the swale.
Okay. So you're clear on that, then?
Yes.
Okay, and you're good with it? Well, so we're good, so we can move on?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, okay. Is there anything else in that number one? Is it just?
No, because that, Fred gets into the plantings on number two.
Yeah.
Can I go back, I'm sorry, I knocked this up. Can we go back to Lom and C, please?
Okay.
And, um, excuse me, Lom and C, number one.
Uh huh.
Their response was that the, the areas along the shoulders of the driveway will be, the grass is not taken, will be graded and seeded and so forth. It's not just there, there are, this, if you look at my, number one says, Lom, has been placed on the edge of the driveway, private section, so forth, so on. Then says, Lom has sped throughout the site, but it's not just the edge of the pavement is what I'm saying. It's different areas that haven't taken, the grass hasn't taken. One in particular is on the opposite side. I'd say, it's a big wide open area on the right side at about station ten or so, opposite lot. And then where the tension basins, storm yard management areas, one, one especially, has to be reseeded and all. That's going to be taken care of though, coincidentally, because it has to be built up again. But this isn't just the.
We're going to be regrading those areas, so we will do the area within the common driveway.
It's not just the edges, but the, so, so.
Are you guys in agreement with Fred?
If it's in the common driveway layout.
If it's in the common driveway layout, we'll do it.
What, do you consider the layout the easement?
And if we do, and these areas certainly will, will regrade.
What do you consider the, the common driveway layout the easement?
We're not doing any additional work on the lots, but.
Right, the lot lines are, are the.
Okay, but then there's an easement for the, there's an easement for the driveway, right?
Yeah, we'll do the easement.
So everything inside the easement, including the easement, okay?
Does that hit what you want, Fred?
Um, I don't know if we can go further.
I agree, we have to stay from now.
I don't know if we can go outside, it's like going outside the right of way of the road.
Yeah.
I'm going to do a question, could you guys just write down your questions? And I'll, just, just so you don't forget them, I just want to go through this once. Yeah, just don't forget your question, write it down and go back.
Okay, so we can go to number two now on the next page?
Uh, number two.
Number two, we talked about, that was on.
That was the plants.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, we're all, your planting, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Did you have something on three?
Uh, no, that was, you have to make a thing, it's not, it wasn't just the edge of the pavement, it was out, it was in the, the easement. Okay, so we go down to the plantings.
So you say we were, you had delivered a manifest and landscapers report and make the necessary adjustments for the reason that trees were replaced. Should be noted, as Dusharman Dillis pointed out, planting confirms that not the common driveway regulations.
So I guess where we would maybe deviate from Fred in this case is that if the tree doesn't meet the precise caliper, but it's a healthy, thriving tree, in our mind, it doesn't make sense to rip that tree out and get rid of it. What we're proposing to do, certainly if there's dead trees, and if the, if the landscaper did something that was overtly wrong as far as missing trees, you know, we can, we can take care of those. And we think that that's a reasonable proposal.
So again, the correct number.
Yeah, and that's why we want to go over the delivery manifest and the landscapers report and, you know, we, there's two, there's two pieces here too. And I, some of these trees are not part of the conservation area. Some of the bushes and such, those plantings, they're covered by another bond. So we're talking about the ones that are not overlapped.
And I would just ask any trees that, if there are trees that you need to order, that they meet the caliber that Sean and I planned.
Okay.
Again, and height.
And height, yeah, whatever the specification.
In the same proportions.
Will we get a kind of a report from you guys on that?
Well, and so I hope that, I have. Well, and so I hope that after we finish all this work by June fifteen, we'll do an inspection with Fred.
Okay. And meet the number.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next, we're going to gotta do a random inspection, even though some of the, the edges, so we kinda already discussed.
Yeah, some of these are, they kinda duplicate.
Tire ruts, we need to regrade that, whatever.
Uh, number three is debris, which we're gonna, we're gonna take care of if there's any more.
Seeding, you need to study the debris, yeah.
E A D signs have, have been worked and they'll get solved. That's number four.
Okay.
Uh, this, this number five deals with a flare in section that will further stabilize with rebar.
Excuse me, one thing, um, can you just, um, make your demo comment? Uh, some of these things, they should be out there for the, um, replacement of different things, to make sure that the concrete, since the, E A D signs and so forth, to make sure there's the right amount of concrete being placed there, the depth and so forth. So some of these things, I'll have to go over all that, I should be there.
So you're being requested to, you're requesting to be notified when this work is done?
Correct.
Okay. Acceptable?
Understood.
Okay. Uh, ch-ch-ch, number five, there are sections. Stabilize there, if they're, if they're agreeing to it. Okay, six, clean clearing sections.
We'll, we'll clean that, rip that.
Okay, swell is.
Uh, that, that swells can be defined and stated out by, uh, Duchamp and Dillis and now we're getting it there.
So, glad you're original comment, well, swell is not defined, it's a must.
This is the one they're going to, um, regrade, this is at the high point where the water sits in it.
So you're saying it wasn't previously defined or something?
It, it isn't, right, it doesn't have the right profile slopes to it, and so it's not draining at the, at the high points of it.
Okay.
They're gonna regrade it based on Duchamp and Dillis' staging of, and showing them the elevations to regrade.
So the slope that exceeds the two to one grade, uh, grade.
That's one of the, the swells.
Yep, swell in front of lot three, that's the, that is stabilized, and to regrade would require moving up trees.
It's the same one.
And possibly some stone walls, and under us could compromise the utility pole.
That's, I think this is the same area, that, yeah.
Oh, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Number nine is the, um, the area we're, we're proposing now to, uh, fill that area with common fill per Fred's request, that slope of three to one, so we're gonna do that.
And I may just clarify something, one reason why it's showing up now, indeed showing up on the plans, is that in that area, the driveway has moved, was constructed two to six feet further to the right than was on the plans, so got constructed closer to the wall. Before, there was a, almost a ten foot flat area between the driveway and the wall.
Uh, I, I, what was the history of that, did they just, was that just going off plan, or was that something that we?
No, it was, no, just got done that way.
Yep. So.
That's what, the, the top of the wall became an issue.
It sounds like you're agreeing to it, and you're, you're gonna fix it, right?
Yeah, and I wanted to clarify what actually happened there.
Yep, flush pipe under the cul-de-sac, possibly all pipes. Alright, so they're gonna do that, clean swell leading to seven, four bay three. Next, raised manhole cover, said you'd take care of that.
One thing about that, I just wanna, um, I don't know if you can describe right now, Walt, but are you bringing in a paving company to just pave a, you're gonna have what, maybe a four, uh, four or five by five area exposed?
Yeah, well, we'll try to make it, we'll try to make it less, uh, but we have to be able to lift the whole top, um, or get a vacuum truck in there, clean everything out, see what the problem is. And then depending on what happens, because you thought that water was flowing backwards, we've gotta check that, and that'll determine what the extent of the excavation is.
And you plan, you plan as to, if, let's say it's a five by five area, just a pavement, are you planning having a paving company in to pave that?
Yes.
Okay. Not a cold patch, but what, really, yes?
No, no.
And try to?
No, we'll do a hot mix.
What we're trying to do is, um, and you and I talked over before, is to have, somehow have no real seam that might settle, and, um, we'll have to work at that with the, make sure it's compacted really well and so forth. It's not a simple, it's not a quick fix type of thing.
No, it won't be.
One more second, Rick.
Okay, number two, this one, I'm thinking it's been chewed up, I want to clean this, probably a trap, but we can handle this, plus the old construction equipment. So that's in the turnaround area where there was heavy equipment, allegedly. I think we saw pictures of it being there actually. I want to Fred discuss this issue, and I'm also just going to transfer that, so what do you say, here the applicant states, that the area cannot be smoothed. It was determined that this was cosmetic, did not compromise railway model, the fixed, need to cut and repave, and has the potential to be, no action is proposed. So, Fred, is it just cosmetic, not functional, or?
Right, it's functional, it's, I doubt, it's been a year now, um, it hasn't deteriorated anymore or anything like that. It is, to, to fix it, would, and there's a couple of places, so it'd be making these small patches.
And the notches could be worse off than.
It, it's not gonna, it's not gonna look any better.
Yeah.
It'll look worse, it should function well the way it is.
Okay. Alright, moving on.
This talks more about tire ruts and also, um, the Cape Cod. Uh, we're proposing obviously to fix the tire ruts with the Lom and C, not, and proposing no action on the, on the Cape Cod burn.
So we have already took photo of it, so the new thing in this item is burn. So is there any part of the burn that's damaged, Fred, that it won't be functional, or is it, it's cosmetic?
Still gonna, still gonna keep the, uh, flow in better. The hard thing, not a hard thing, once again, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be patchwork. Visually, it will look probably worse than it does, admired Scott right now, to, to fix it, it's, um, it's gonna have a gap all the time, the, the gap will open a little, from when you do burn, to replacing burn to the old.
Okay, alright, number.
Number two's the same, uh, with the, the turnaround itself.
Okay.
The, number one underneath, uh, inspection on seven, ten, eighteen is the common fill, which we're, we're gonna do.
Yep.
Number two there is, um, you know, the reseeding, within the easement area.
Yep.
We're gonna do that.
Okay.
Um, and then everything else below, that is my stuff from last time. I mean, a lot of that stuff duplicates, to be honest, but, um, anything that, you know, might not be captured in Fred's list that was online, is incorporated into this.
So the top soil, placing the shoulders there, so we talked about that. Number two is the burn, for these, will be raised and additional lining will be created. Quite adjusted. So that had an estate jet yoing for tonight, right?
Yes, correct, but we have reached out to Duchamp and Dillis, and they're aware of our timeline, that we've committed to longer here.
And they can be done by June fifteen?
They're gonna do it by then, 'cause we need them to, so.
Yeah, so, uh, so the H E I inspection report, so that's the crown, right, what else?
The swell we talked about.
Yes, there's a swell, and we said we're gonna extend that out.
Yes.
So the, the basin two needs to be raised, same as the other one. I think we already talked about five. I think we talked about all this, is there anything we didn't talk about?
I don't think, honestly, I don't think so, I think, um, everything in here was also mentioned, yeah, Fred.
I think the only real new thing was the basins and understanding how long the crown wasn't in place, really, with the ASBOW, right? Alright. Well, that's pretty clear, thank you. So this is bond, we have the bond estimate. So this is reviewed by you, Fred. Is there any version left? Uh, revised five sixteen, for your comment.
Do you like me to quickly explain, it might be easier?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the items, you have two columns, um, twelve sixteen, which was the one that everyone was familiar with before for twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars. And then, um, a week or so ago, it came up with a revised estimate, which is all in red. What basically has happened is everything has stayed the same, nothing has been done.
Yep.
Right? Except for the ASBOW plan, the majority of the ASBOW plans have been done.
The only other, the only other thing I'd say, Fred didn't know this at, on five sixteen, so he could have reflected it, but the E A D signs have been ordered paid for.
Oh, right, oh, I didn't, but.
But you wouldn't know that on five sixteen.
But they're not installed, so doesn't, that doesn't matter.
Sure, still used to be.
So, I took off eighty percent of the ASBOW plans, what they're gonna have to do is get the grades and the swell, and they put it in, and that the, um, regrading of the, uh, storm yard management areas.
Oh, right, 'cause those, they'll need to be updated?
Right.
Okay.
And so I, I reduced that from five thousand to one thousand dollars still to be done. Then I added in what's in red, the swell from stations three to four, reconstruction of basins one and two.
Is that really only, is that really only a thousand dollars worth of work, I mean, I guess it's just.
Yeah, it's just, it's just bringing in the material and spreading it, it's not even a, it's not excavating. Oh, the swell, the swell is excavated, but yeah, that's, uh, that.
Just taking advantage of it.
Right, and then the, the Lom and C goes in with everything else still, and so.
Like, like Danielle was saying, uh, there's no, like, there's the utility pole, I mean, you can work around whatever's there.
They should be, yes, yeah, definitely, they came along the plantings and utility pole.
Yeah, okay.
I think they can, I saw, I went and looked at it, not after this, I just got the swell today like everyone else, but I looked at the swell.
Right.
I looked at it, um, you know, before I did the estimate, just to see what, what might be in the way if there was. So it ends up being, um, a net of a two, two hundred dollar decrease. We, we, they gained four thousand back on the ASBOWs, and there's thirty-eight hundred in new work.
Yep.
So theoretically, at the same.
So that work for the basins is, just, what, it's just digging out the inside and filling up the?
Yeah, not even the whole inside, just near the top, just, um, bowl, uh, like a bowl making it bigger, excuse me, they're gonna probably use that material to put on the top.
That's, that's it, exactly.
Yes, it's just a little.
We have to make the basins a little bit bigger, but we're a little shy on the top, so we're gonna take that material out of them.
I assume that these basins, these basins are outside the easement, and your equipment may rip up grass and stuff, is, are you gonna?
No, the, uh, the drainage swells are in the easement.
But is your equipment gonna remain in the easement to do the work?
Yes.
So you, um, you're not gonna have to, like, rip up?
The basins are in a, on an easement, part of the driveway easement, if you wanna call it that, a drainage easement of the driveway.
And, and, um.
So it's still responsible for.
And we'll have to be using a small mini, mini extra there.
So you don't envision much rip up? Base, base in number three.
Just so you know, Eric, what's gonna, what would have been ripped up is gonna be filled over anyways, to make it higher.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
So that, so you're kind of making it higher as you're backing out or whatever?
Right, and so wherever they're gonna be turning and have their machines fall, that area has to be raised anyways.
Yeah.
So it's all new, new soil in a sense.
You're doing the hydro there too?
Yes.
Okay, so.
So we're basically agreeing to almost everything.
Yeah.
And we think we can have it all completed by June fifteenth, with maybe the exception of the paving for the catch basins. Drag manhole.
The paving for the catch basin.
For the, for the man, for the manhole.
What was the date on that? Oh, I thought you said June fifteen.
No, well, I, I, I think I put sort of a, it's gonna depend on the, the scheduling of the paving, I think, right?
Okay.
We'd obviously have to do the, raise the, the manhole before we could even.
Yeah.
Schedule it, yeah.
Okay, I mean, this is very thorough, I appreciate it, thank you. Any comments from the board?
I mean, my only comment would be, you know, it seems like a lot of work, you know, to do by the fifteenth month, so. And it's all in here, it says, you know, estimated date of completion, I understand, you know? Depending on scheduling and weather and stuff, you know, it's hard to say, but, you know, it's just a lot of work to be done by fifteen, given how things have.
Once it's, once it's staked, um, and we're mobilized out there, it's probably, most of it's probably a few days work.
Well, we have a landscape contractor that has tentatively given us a date to work out there for four days. And they work out there four days straight with the crews that they have, they should be able to finish this.
Okay, anything else, Fred?
Yes, may I go back to the estimate for a moment? Eric, I wonder if you have a copy of the email I sent you with the estimate?
I forgot to bring it out.
That's alright, that's alright. Uh, what I did say was, what's not included in the estimate, 'cause we don't know for sure, are two things. One is if the, um, if it was decided to have the driveway where it's not crowned, crowned.
Yeah.
That'd be the board's decision, so that's not in the estimate, first of all.
Yeah.
Secondly, if when, when the pipes are exposed and the ASBOW's done, the pipes, if they aren't by chance in the correct elevations or if something's wrong, then they might have to be relayed, worst case scenario, that's not in there either. But we don't know that.
So, what do you say, say it again? This is the basin work?
This is the, from the catch basins to manhole, and out to the detention basin.
So when you do the basin work, you're gonna do something to the pipes, or no?
No, we don't know if anything has to be done, because they haven't been able to get the elevations of the pipes yet on the ASBOW.
Okay.
If they were wrong, or, first case.
Why haven't, why haven't they been able to get the elevations?
Can't get in the manhole because it's buried.
Oh, okay.
And the water in the catch basins and the, um, detention basin.
Is that part of the holdback for the ASBOW?
They have to get that information, yes.
Uh, and once we open it up, Duchamp and Dillis will come out, we shoot those grades, as well as our detention areas and the swell.
But, worst case, if there was something drastically wrong with the pipes,
Yep.
and they had to be redone, that's not in the estimate, of course, okay? And once again, if the, the board feels, for whatever reason, that we're gonna have to crown the driveway, that's not in the bond estimate either.
Okay, so the driveway crowning and if, I guess, not covered.
Hopefully, the issue with the water and the pipes and all, there's some debris in there, and that's the issue more than that they're not laid correctly. Which goes with the flushing of the drainage system, I think it was already included.
When do you plan on opening up that manhole cover?
When the crews are out there, so.
But I'm saying bef, before all this finished work, or?
Probably in the next two weeks, we're gonna try to get it all done at the same time.
And then, well?
By, yeah, so we'll, we'll know.
Duchamp will get in there?
Yeah, we'll know if there's a problem by June fifteen for sure, 'cause we'll have it open, we may not have it retired, but it will be open at set to grade.
Okay.
And Fred will be out there. And Fred will be out there by then.
Okay. Um. So. I'll open it up to the residents in a bit, but the question is, do we? So, it looks like we have the bond for the work. You know. If, if we wanted, so the previous, the previous deadline was June first. I mean, if we wanted to pull the bond, it sounds like Fred feels like the work could be done. Minus if we felt crowning needs to be done, or if the, if there's some issue with the pipes and not draining properly.
Correct.
And again, excuse me, sorry. And again, we're not accounting for the one point five markup, you know, it's a similar issue.
So, this is, so. So, that is forty-five thousand essentially. Yeah, so we wouldn't start releasing bond until it got to within the one point five. Right? I mean, we're not asking for more money, but we won't release bond until it's within the one point five.
Wouldn't release bond probably until all of the work is completed at this point, we're talking two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. So, I mean, I guess it doesn't come into play then.
It probably won't, but I wanted to at least bring it to the board's attention.
Yeah. Right, because they're not gonna ask for partial release.
No, we really don't want them back here one more time, they want to go and see us one more time.
Yeah. Okay.
Um. I mean, it's an aggressive schedule, I'm, I'm happy with it, obviously, I'm a resident, that's what they have to say. Fred, I mean, you've been doing this for many years, how, what you feeling on it? Or that it gets, it can get done, everything will be done the way it should be?
Just in general, you know, projects just hopefully been finished and still going on.
Correct.
So, there's no way to say, just, the control is strictly within the, within their abilities, within, whether it's the weather or not, it's, it's.
Right, but you're gonna be there looking, you know, but.
I'll be available, yes.
Where are we with the money for Fred?
I have to check. I know I just received invoices from Fred, and I've gotta see if one voice in the long hill had a recent invoice, and then I'll, I'll get back to Walter, you know, if we're getting close to zero.
You have no issue?
We, we do pay him for that work, but we have been all along.
He's been pretty good about.
Okay.
Providing money.
That's good. Uh, alright, and the residents have anything?
I guess our primary concern is the.
Who's, stay in the?
Oh, sorry, Scott, Sean, and Chris. Our primary concern is that we're well under the one and a half times of the bond right now, and that, considering all the extensions, we'd like to see that money put up prior to the working.
Especially given the.
Rectify the bond before we start.
I will follow right on fire for us, if we miss on funding, if that's the board's desire.
Especially given the line, so they want forty-seven.
Especially considering the uncertainty that Fred discussed with the drainage and the, the way the swale may or may not work. If, if it doesn't, I'd be the money to know that they're not gonna just dig up the swale and then it not work, and we're stuck without the money to fix it. Or if something's wrong with the pipes and they dug up the manhole and.
Please, just let me get it with Charlotte.
Yeah.
Anything else from the audience? Yeah.
Susan Sharma, one forty-nine month old.
Mm-hmm.
I just had a question about when they do the manhole, how does that affect us traveling down the driveway? Are we gonna be able to get in? How long would that be, the process? Do we have a timeline for that?
We'll, we'll plate it so we won't obstruct the traffic at all.
Um, just so it would be like during the day when you're actively working, is there a way to get around it?
Well, yeah, we'll have a metal plate with us so that they can go over it.
Oh, okay, so, you'd have to put down, you'd have to put down a metal plate, let people go by, and then take the plate off?
Yes.
And then, that would be in place overnight or whatever?
Yes.
Non-work hours?
Yeah.
I have a few questions, and I don't have that document, so I apologize if it's written in there, but I, I don't have it to look at.
That's fine.
The Loaman seed, they've hired a new landscaping company, they said, which is promising, because the other one didn't know how to do that, but they said, we'll take care of it. Is there an actual plan for how that's being done, because the way it's been done several times in the past hasn't worked?
So, according to their, the inspection report they submitted, it says that the hydro seed is a, a much better, um, pro, um, application for seeding than just throwing the seed down. Hopefully, it will actually take.
Right.
Because typically, correct me if I'm wrong, Walter, it has a tackifier or some type of substance, and it'll.
That's correct.
Keep it there.
So, this landscape, this is talking about bringing in screen room, doing both sides of the driveways, raking it out. Then, spraying it with the hydro seed mix, and it's got a tackifier, fertilizer, and mulcher mix that holds, contains water.
Every, all the bare spots up to the easement?
Yes.
Hey, that sounds a lot better than last time, or last five times. Um, the, I guess another question is, if you've ordered the EAD signs, is there documentation for that, what they look like? Can Fred or someone approve them before they get cemented or concreted into the ground, because last time they weren't acceptable?
I think Fred said that he wanted to be there for that, is that correct?
No, she's asking, is there catalog sheets showing what it is before it gets delivered?
Or proof that it's been ordered, yeah.
And then, also proof of it, but not, not the installation, like I was talking about.
Well, yeah, but I'm glad you're gonna be here, but that the signs are better than.
Do you, do you feel that the residents will be happy with the sign you chose, that it's not some?
You know, they look awful. I mean, they're a foot and a half by two feet, according to the specs. They're just a metal sign that has black glaring for the numbers, and they have to be seven feet high, so they look awful. And, you know, they're not gonna look good on a, on private driveway and residential subdivision, but that's what's on the plan, so that's what we are.
We, we originally had put, you know, address signage, I think, on, on trees out there, and, um, these signs probably look more industrial than you would normally see at a, or, or, you know, common driveway, but they, they, they're what the spec calls for. So, that's what we got.
Don't other, other common driveways have like, you know, stones with numbers and stuff, like?
They can.
Some do, some don't.
So, this particular common driveway?
We need a percentage of something other than that.
You, you don't have, the, the plans show what the regulations call for.
Right.
The others have gone beyond that, some has a stone granite bottom, seven feet high, with a wrought iron. Um, hanger thing with the sign that shows, with the size sign showing the numbers and so forth. That what's required is what they have in the plan.
So, that's in the common driveway rules and regs?
Correct.
It is, um, so, I mean, I guess if the residents were against that, the board could consider a waiver of that requirement with input from fire.
Input what?
Input from fire department.
Oh.
Whether they put it, you know, on the trees or try to do it in a more.
But I guess the developer isn't necessarily required to do anything more.
More than that, no, I agree with that.
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if the residents want to, through their association, do something better.
Yeah.
They'd, they'd have to ask for a waiver.
We had to go upon the fire department with house numbers on the houses and on trees in front of the lawn, so they, fire department was satisfied with everything before. I think once we put these signs up, the homeowners will want to take them down after we're out of there.
I think that to me seems really silly. It seems like something that we should work out.
Yeah, can we, can we work that out?
Well, we already bought the signs.
You already purchased them?
The sign in the front, I think, that goes in the front of the street is two and a half feet by two feet, I think, and it's just a white metal sign, you know.
That's essential. I know that's something that we do need, is to have the, the addresses of the front of the common driveway, that's, I know for sure, very important.
But the sign.
Requirement for fire.
The signs have numbers and arrows even at each driveway.
Okay.
That's what's required. So, I don't know if there's discussion to have today on changing them, but, um, that's changing. I don't know, like I said, you, you ask them to order, they order the dates, so they order.
So, I thought the sign we were talking about, so it's just pointing to where the addresses are, right?
And the address.
And the address itself.
There's one in front with five numbers on it.
Yep.
Then, at each driveway, there's, at the first driveway theoretically, there's one with a sign that shows house one over here and two, three, four, and five straight ahead. The next one shows house two and three, four, five straight ahead, with arrows, things of that nature.
But we'll put them up, and they can do whatever they want after.
Either you order them and pay for it, so they can move on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm enunciating the plan, that's all we can ask.
Um, one other question about the fill. Um, so, they talked about getting common fill to add where there's the issue with the, yeah.
Just fill.
So, and I emailed, I haven't heard back, but we're still digging up trash from the fill they've added along the common driveway. We picked up an eight-foot irrigation pipe the other day. So, I, I'd like some kind of documentation, or I would, where this fill's coming from, where the old fill came from. I know the fill in the conservation area, there's documentation, that's obviously much better fill, but the fill they've used all throughout. The lawns and the sides of the driveway is full of debris and trash, so I don't want them adding more trash to our.
Uh, just in general, Erica, I know I, we talked about this, I talked about fill and certified, how exactly does that work? Do we require it be certified?
We don't require it, no, I mean, there's certain specifications, right, Fred, in terms of general fill, I mean, it shouldn't have trash in it, but.
We'll be getting that go from W B Graves, and we can give it the slips.
Correct.
So.
W B Graves?
Yeah.
That's why I'm construction.
And Motelton, and then Templeton, and they have a pit somewhere, so it's a big, very big company, very reputable, so.
Is that where the other fill came from, or was it?
A lot of it did, yeah.
So, might not be put up.
Well, Fred will be there too, so.
I know this is, I mean, I brought this up in the past, you know, just the fill, are we in balance as a town to have the fill certified? Or like have some type of?
Certified or.
Or just tested, or?
We certainly could, moving forward.
I guess is there any process in construction where, you know, there's like certain grades of fill, you know, or that it's been tested, you know, for contaminants, or, I don't know.
Typically, you don't have chemical analysis. Um, most of the time, there is some kind of physical analysis, because it needs to meet a certain grad, uh, uh, gradation, which Fred typically reviews. Correct, Fred?
The, the common fill does not have a gradation.
Okay, but some of the other.
It's common as, the gravel underneath the base for the driveway for pavement, twelve inches of gravel has a gradation, and they send, they send in those slips. Those analysis that are given to me, and then I send them on character, and then the next reports. Um, common fill is no different than you dig in a hole, going through the topsoil and loam in your yard.
Yep.
And getting down to what's called virgin soil, that's common fill.
Okay.
I have it in my yard, you have in your yards and so forth and so on.
Okay.
Um, it doesn't have pipe in it, irrigation pipe, things like that, that happens. Not all the time, but it happens, it didn't happen. I, I, I'm out there, of course not one hundred percent of the time that the construction's going on. If this fill has, um, farming things in it that shouldn't be, given it's brick and things of that nature, which some people say that's still okay. It still doesn't meet that spec of common fill, and it's not allowed. I don't see every cubic foot of fill that's put in a subdivision road or a driveway or anything. It could be more on the house logs, I'm not sure exactly where, where you're talking about, but that's, it still can't, not a hundred percent of it is seen. You know, I see when they dump it.
Yeah.
So, I see it come out of the truck, and, but I might see one load in ten, for instance, over the whole job, you know, kind of some of it.
I mean, I don't, yeah, I mean, I guess this is just a, I mean, it's a me issue, so, I just, maybe in the future, we can talk. I don't know if there's like grading.
There isn't, as far as common fill goes, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, it's not like grade A, grade B, or C.
No, it's a paragraph.
Okay.
Of what's free of, um, stumps, roots, things, loam, organics, things like that.
Yeah.
It's just, well, right, you know, of course, that's, it's natural, first of all, it's a natural material, free of.
So, if you see, when you're out there, if you see that there's an issue, then we can push back, if, if we don't feel it meets that.
But they always take care, you know, not just them, but all the other contractors, that, it, it happens, and they said, oh, they dug to, they dug, they were next to another pile of stuff.
Yeah.
And so, well, then.
Okay.
Well, we left the piping there, so we appreciate it being removed when the rest of the debris is removed. Um, yeah, so I guess my own, like, we still prefer that the bond be pulled, it seems like you're not moving that way, so. But we are still concerned, like we brought up with the one point five, that there at, there is more work being added, it's still up in the air, how it's gonna be done, some of it. And I don't understand, like, you've been generous giving another extension, why that money wouldn't be put up before it's allowed to be extended again?
Would you guys? Could you go to the forty-five thousand?
No, and I'll, I'll tell you why, we're, we're not asking for any of the money to be released right now, and we're gonna be going out there and going gangbusters to do this work. By the next time we see you, one way or another, items off that list are going to be gone, and you're still going to have the, the same amount of the bond. I don't feel comfortable having my client grab any more money at this point. Um, I think, frankly, I think there are things on there that are overstated, like landscaping, plantings of thirteen thousand dollars is still being held. I would suggest that especially given that some of those trees and shrubs are covered by the conservation bond, that's probably, um, an overstated figure.
I think that wasn't the case, right?
That's not my understanding, I've talked to Rebecca, and our bonds are being held for separate items.
Well, no, I understand, though, that our, the only reason, because your regulations don't talk about plantings at all. The only reason that Fred's bringing it up in the context of this hearing is because our plan that Ducharme and Dillis submitted was also the conservation plan. So, every planting that was on the conservation plan is on this planning board plan. So, there absolutely is, is some overlap there. Now, it may not be that, for example, the, the plan, the conservation commission may not be holding the bond for the trees along the driveway. If it's not within the buffer zone, it's not really within their purview in the first place. But, but some of those plantings are gonna be overlap. But in any event, we don't agree that there, even, even if that were not the case, thirteen thousand dollars is an awful lot of money. I'm picking the, the, the plantings as one example there, uh, but we're not gonna, I mean, we're gonna be, we're committing the end of this stuff by June fifteenth. We're not gonna come back in with fifteen thousand dollars before then, just to have the board hold. From our perspective, that doesn't make, doesn't make any sense.
I understand that, but I think the track record has been doing, coming and getting some of the work done, causing more damage to be done fixed later, and that's why we're so reluctant to have him complete work. Because a lot of times when work is done, more work is added because something's damaged.
What I would suggest is that the board vote to request the additional funding, I'll submit the letter to Walter. Whether or not he chooses to put up that money, at least on the record, we have it that we requested that funding. And then, if they get the work done in the next two weeks, great, it becomes a non-issue, but at least for our records, it's been requested. That would be my recommendation, so we're covered.
So, assuming, you know, by the, our next meeting, we're closing this out, hopefully.
Hopefully, it won't be an issue.
It would be a moot point, but at least the vote would.
We have a vote, and we have a request out there, and then we can go from there.
Yeah. I mean, it's not like if we don't get the money tomorrow, we're not like season persisting on or anything.
We'll lay down the work will be done, but at least it gets us, it covers us.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I agree. One thing about the, uh, the bond, come to plantings, Loaman seed and so forth, unless just use the number of fifteen for all that is done. Would the board release all that money for those?
Say it again?
All the plantings are in.
Yeah.
As far as visually and everything else, the loam is down, the seed is down. Usually has to go through two growing seasons, or at least the one, so, does the, does everything for the, for that landscape, does those landscape items, does all that get released? Or does the board still hold money until everything's established?
Yeah, typically we're supposed to see it established, right?
You're saying this is the, so it doesn't come down to two weeks from now, I'm sorry, a month from now?
Yeah.
And it isn't.
My, my concern is that on previous reports, you know, comments have been made that the, the grass has, for example, weeds growing in it. Well, the report was done in August and that, that particular instance, how I'm thinking of, my lawn, which is irrigated, has weeds in it in August. You know, if that's the standard, then we're opposed to the board, for example, holding money for seeding. If we've hydroseeded, which to, in, in my mind, the, the reason that we're offering hydroseeding in the first place is to sort of go above and beyond what would normally be required, so that you're not in a position where you're holding that for reseeding. As far as, as trees go, you know, again, a lot of those trees, we're not proposing to replace it. They're alive and thriving and that's been, they've been in there for some time. Any dead trees that are getting replaced, you know, we're gonna note. And, you know, those trees will be the appropriate caliper and size for the plan. At some point, you know, we're gonna want, we want this to end, we don't wanna be back here another year and a tree's dying. We don't know if it's because of plow kit. So I, I just, at, at, at some point, we're, we're asking the board to kind of, you know, call this, this finalized. We obviously still have the conservation.
Yeah, what's up, Juan? How much is that?
For conservation, I believe it's somewhere in the 30,000 dollar range as well.
And obviously it's up to the board, but I think these applicants have been given the benefit of the doubt more than enough times that it's time that they have to now show that they've done the work correctly. I think we, we've given them plenty of leeway. That's my opinion, obviously it's up to the board.
Can we share a couple pictures, is that all right?
Yeah. I mean, I guess we're not really necessarily talking about bond release today.
Yeah, I, I think this can be worked out at another meeting.
As opposed to how it looks now along the sides of common driveway after they were supposedly seeded sufficiently in the beginning.
So it's, it's not that we're picky about a few weeds, we're really not. It's that the whole area is overrun with weeds because grass was never established and the soil is so poor that it's just full of rocks. That's what weeds are.
We'll be back before the board requesting our bond amount and we'll have our position at that point.
Yeah, so, so I guess, I guess the question is, the question before us is, are we happy with the bond estimate? And are we gonna give an extension to, my next meeting is what?
It's the 12th. They're saying the work won't be done until after that, so when does the board? Actually, can we first have a vote, let's just make sure I get everything on the record. A vote to request the 1.5 multiplier? At least I have that in the record, now I can issue that letter.
Yeah, good. What are you guys?
Want to do the motion loss right now?
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion that we request a 1.5 multiplier on the lawn for a total of approximately 45,000.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Yeah. So, on record is requesting that.
I just, I wanna give my opinion to the, to the residents. I mean, we did, I said last time to get, you know, Fred's input in on it. They've come back with a, again, an aggressive schedule and the fact that it seems like they've got a new landscaper. I, I feel it would be in your best interest to go another two weeks, get it done, all, all said and done, and we're, we're through. And hopefully there is nothing wrong with any of those pipes or, because this could turn into, the potential could be bad in, in terms of that. But they, they seem to be doing their due diligence and when what they've cleaned up and presented suffice, it's, it's good for me, so.
Actually, the multiplier hopefully would protect us against that too.
I mean, and the fact that there's still 30,000 dollars out there, I'm assuming for ConCon, that, that helps too, so. I, I would let them get the job done.
So our next meeting is 12, they're saying they'll be done by the 15th, so we have the 12th and then the 28th?
Yeah, it's the 26th. We would ask to be on the agenda for the 26th.
So we would need an extension to, just to 26th?
Well, no, it could even be beyond that because I don't have one in plan to do it either.
Well, I think it would be, we, we would say come in on the 26th and then we definitely have a progress report. We should have the ASBIL plan.
On the 12th?
On that 26th.
On the 12th, okay.
Because the work will be done, Ducharme-Dillis can finish their ASBIL. And worst cases, we don't have the paving done, but at least we'll be able to give you a report on it. But everything else should be done.
Does Fred, you're the inspector before that?
You're around?
Yes.
We'll tell Fred when we're planning on starting out there.
So July 1st, is that?
Well, I, the 26th, I think it's, I, I'm filled with the 26th.
Okay. So extend it to the 26th.
Please, so could I get a, can I get a vote for that?
Yeah.
Well, wait a minute, so, I mean, if, if the work, so, so I took a ride out there today and I, I drove down your, your driveway and saw a lot of these, these things. And, you know, I, I kind of, you know, it, it seems like we're in a much better place, you know, in terms of bringing the work that needs to be done. And based on the comment tonight, you know, if the estimated, you know, work to be done is, is about June 15th, you know, I'd, I'd like to have you guys come in on the 12th and tell us where you are. And it should be really close to, to be done. And if it's not, that's gonna be a problem.
Here's, here's what I might suggest, if, if you want that progress update, can, continue it to the 12th. But if, if staff is able to update the board such that, you know, we're days away from having the rest of it complete and then the paving needs to be done, then, you know, if we're not at that point, we could continue the meeting without having to come in. If we haven't done anything, we're gonna have to come in here and explain to the board why.
And we certainly won't have the ASBIL from Ducharme-Dillis by then because we have to complete the work first and then have the field crews go out there.
No, that's fine. I, I just, you know, in my opinion, just to say, okay, you know, we have a pretty long list of, of items, right? And, you know, by June 12th, you know, they should be, you know, pretty much done. Or maybe there's a couple that are, that are still pending due to schedules or the weather's bad or something, and we just, you know, get an update. And if, if you guys, you know, say, hey, 95% is done, these things are still pending, you know, can you just give us another couple of weeks and not come and do that? We can do that.
So this isn't a public hearing, so we don't have to necessarily set the date here, right?
No, of course not, no.
But Fred, you'll be out there before the 12th, right? I mean, I assume, I assume you'll be out there multiple times.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Peter, I think that we should still have this on our next agenda item, whether or not they have to come.
Yeah.
I, I agree, depends on how much work they've completed. So if I get a good progress report from Fred and I can bring in his inspection report to you, we can go over that.
Yeah.
If he feels comfortable, I feel comfortable, but I think it's fine if they don't have to come in.
But if nothing's been done.
But if, if it's clear to me that nothing's been done and same with Fred, then I think they should come, be accountable to that.
But that's kind of what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
That's good. So, I mean, we don't need to vote for that, let's, let's just.
No, but, but there should be an extension because the, the board's had a vote previously.
So it's still extended to the 26th, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we extend the, the deadline to the 26th. 26th, you know, with, with this letter dated May 16th of all the work that the developer agrees to do.
I'm just thinking, is there any with, before I agree to it? That's, that's two more weeks and, you know, it would, what's there any, is there, is there anything that could happen where if, if they come in on the 12th and, you know, and I, I just don't want it to, well, you gave us the 26th to get it done. And I, I kinda, I'd like to see a lot of the progress being held or done by the 12th. So is there any kind of language we should put into that 26th date?
With the anticipation that the majority of the work will be done by?
They're saying, they say no work has been done.
Yeah, yeah, and then they, and then now it's on record saying, well, really we gave it to the 26th. It's, yeah, 26th.
Yeah, so, so maybe, you know, make a motion that, that we extend the deadline to the 26th. You know, with the work that is, is detailed on this letter dated May 16th. You know, however, with the contingency that we'd like an update on the 12th as to the status of, of the work completed. And we reserve the right to pull the bond at that time if, if significant progress has moved.
I mean, can, can you do that? I mean, you must say in the 26th, but if we don't have like set, you know.
To be honest with you, I think the, the initial motion was actually fine because I believe that letter states that the work, the anticipation the work is done, will be done on June 15th.
Yeah, it says estimated date of completion by the 15th and there's only one item that has a note that it, you know, take a little bit longer.
And I just, I just wanna add to that first mo- motion, you know, with estimated completion date of June 15th for majority of items.
Could I suggest the motion?
State your name.
Mark Stray, 170 Long Hill. I would suggest the motion specify the 15th and then at the 12th, if sufficient progress has been made, the remaining items could be extended out to the, to the 26th or to a, an agreeable date for that.
We could, yeah, I mean, we could make the deadline 15th and then extend it on the 12th to the 26th.
Seeing what, what has been, yeah, I like that, I, I like that better.
Okay.
That makes sense. All right, so, so it's good. I will make a motion that we extend the deadline on 170, 147 Long Hill Road to June 15th with the work that is, is outlined on the letter dated May 16th. And the board is going to review progress on our next meeting at June 12th.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I got a question.
No, what?
I don't want, I don't want to interrupt the more important piece, but on Fred's report earlier in the year, or a year ago, there's areas, a couple of areas on the edges of the common driveway that are cracked and kind of breaking away because of the rust next to it. I believe those are being taken care of, I didn't hear it and I didn't, we didn't actually get to see the document, you guys are willing.
I apologize, I'll, I'll forward it if you guys need it.
So I just wanted to make sure that those are.
Was that covered? And what, do, do you have an item number for that Fred?
No.
I don't believe so.
And same with the curb at the top of the driveway, where the flatbed came in, it's kind of ripped apart.
The burn?
Where was that, Kevin?
At the top of the driveway?
That, that was in the, the burn, but it's, that was the issue we talked, that's the part we talked about, about cutting and replacing it. And it still functions, it's not aesthetically perfect in any means. Yeah, where it's cracked. It hasn't, it hasn't deteriorated more since, that's about a year ago, I don't recall.
Um, that's just, that's just recent, I can't.
No, but it happened.
Oh yeah, at least a year ago.
Yeah. It's still intact.
So Sammy, if you replace it, then you're gonna have splits.
Correct.
Which could cause gaps in all ways.
It's gonna, it's gonna separate a little bit, I mean, just like when, by paving, it ends up separating. There's no perfect solution to one person, one way is great and another person knows is great.
Okay, I think we'll, all right, so, did you have some notes?
Yes, I was looking at the ASBILs and there's, two of the turnarounds don't meet the dimensional requirements. And a third turnaround is not shown on the ASBIL, they're talking regularly about it.
I think we talked about that last time and we said.
Turnouts, I'm sorry, the turnouts, I'm sorry, what?
Well, I think we talked about that because it was, what did we say?
There was one turnout that was like 306 feet, not 308.
Yeah.
Don't talk about the size of the turnout.
The size.
Yeah, okay.
Not, not where they're located, the 306 feet is fine, so, I mean.
Yeah.
No one would notice anything different. But the size of, and I think the first one is because I think when the curb got put in too tight, if you wanna call it that, and reduced it quite a bit. And you can still turn in and out of them.
So they're not turnarounds, they're just meant to pull.
Turnouts, yeah, to, to pull over so someone else can go by.
I haven't.
I said he's gonna talk.
Did that come up in the ASBIL?
It's in the ASBIL, yeah. You know, he didn't talk to me, but he, he said he's gonna talk to you.
I guess, I, I guess our position on that, without having talked to our engineer, number one, we need to talk to our engineer. Number two, if they function and they're, you know, substantially according to plan, I, I think that it'd be another item that we would say we don't need to address because potentially it costs more problems. But we'll talk to, we'll talk to Greg about it.
Okay, that sounds good. We done? Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. I'm not feeling like talking about a master plan right now.
Your master plan is, your head, your master plan, are you, is your head hitting your pillow?
Yeah, I don't even eat dinner.
I would say that we move it, it's 11 o'clock.
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nobody here for it, so.
Let's move that to the next meeting.
Yeah, we need, I mean, because, well, just quickly, I asked, I, what do we wanna talk about? We have the charter, which we can discuss. Also, within the master plan, there's kind of like a checklist of things that.
There's a matrix, an implementation matrix, which I printed out and I kind of tried to update on where we're at with that. That was in your packet.
Right, thank you for your question, I greatly appreciate it.
Right, so there's an implementation matrix, which is this guy?
So, yeah.
So I guess I would just request that the board goes through it before the next meeting and kind of have this. So this is like what we expected to do, or what, you know, what we planned to do, short term, long term, whatever, medium term. And Erica has marked.
I just have some quick notes down here.
Yeah, so, so what I did wanna talk about was the charter, but also, you know, what on a high level do we wanna get out of the master plan and add things potentially to this, like public sewer or whatever?
Yeah, so I put together a list of items based on past board discussions in the last couple of years, as well as things I've worked on, you know, through the planning department that will need to be incorporated into the master plan. For example, to complete street policy, that will need to get implemented.
Yeah.
So you have that in the packet. There's some really good information in, in your packet tonight at MHC, my presentation.
So you have the charting here.
Yeah, and then I also pulled the process that they used the last time when they did the master plan for selecting members for the committee, based on a certain, you know, skill set and, you know, interest groups. And I assume we'll use a similar process.
So, I don't know if it's next meeting, I don't know what it looks like, but one meeting I would, I would almost like to dedicate to the master plan kickoff. We can call master plan kickoff and send out every single bell and whistle to let people know that we're gonna be discussing this. We're, you know, we're discussing the charter, we're gonna be discussing the major pieces that we feel need to be addressed. And just kind of make that the focus of one meeting. Although like if we have a really light meeting that you feel, I don't know if that's the next meeting or what, but, but I'm not.
I think sometimes I'm trying to understand the level of effort that you're. I think sometimes I'm trying to understand the level of effort that you're, you're, what your expectation is for that meeting. The only reason I ask is that the housing choice grant, the larger one, that application has opened now, so I may, depending on how I think we'll score, I may be focusing a ton of time trying to get money for that.
Did hear is good for your time.
I think I had great information if we had it here tonight, but it's just so late. Um.
Yeah.
And certainly we can at least just push that.
So going through this stuff is kind of what I want to.
What I, what I think we should do is maybe wait till the summer and have that true, like kickoff, where we really invite a lot of people.
Okay.
Where I can do more research, the board can do a little research, and we can get to a point where I feel comfortable and knowledgeable enough to.
Okay, instead of just being like, have a group of people here and be like, okay, what do we want to do? Like, let's get through.
I, I want to have a, a time, a, a, a process, a timeline that we can say, this is our plan of action, what we intend to do.
And then.
I have a good idea now what that needs to be, but let's try to even.
Okay, well, so then I guess just I would say, on our next light meeting, whether it's the next meeting or a meeting after that or whatever, let's go through what you have here, your, the implementation document and the charter, and just as a board start to commit, even go back and read the old document, um, just really start to familiarize yourself what's in there, and start thinking what needs to be in there, you know? So, I mean, we're really, so, so, so when we have that big meeting, we're not like, you know, we've been thinking about it, and we're not, it's not, it's not, um.
And it's not, I wouldn't consider that like, because a lot of times you do have a kickoff meeting, but that, that really won't take place once we have the committee in place. And one of the first steps is that you, you look at your vision statement.
Yeah.
And you figure out, okay, this vision stage we need to update. That's really, it seems, what I've seen from other towns that have done this, that seems to be like step one, that's the vision. And that is almost like one of those workshops where people come, you know, breakout sessions, and you kind of go through everything.
And that's after we have like the charter.
And usually it's the committee that spearheads that.
Yeah.
But I do think it's a good idea to have a meeting, and maybe even if it's, I don't know, let's talk about it at the next meeting, maybe it's with Board of Selectment. Maybe that's the meeting that you're talking about. I don't know, because I know.
Yeah.
At least the last, you know, when they did the last update, Board of Selectment, it was, you know, both planning board and Board of Selectment. So I don't know if we'll handle it the same way, or if it'll just be.
Yeah. Well, I think going through this stuff again, it's pretty big picture stuff, you know? I think it's a little check on, but I am toast.
That's great. I'm gonna go.
Yeah. Oh, actually, hold on.
We, uh, we have to.
Sorry. Um, yeah, we have to organize the board. Um. I've been chairman for a year and a half. I am happy to continue doing it. I don't know if, if you guys have another, um, idea. I know Mark has brought up rotation. I mean, I particularly, because Board of Selectment has, has three members and they're three-year terms, and um, the way they do it is the final year of their term is the chairman, and it's kind of like a gentleman's agreement type thing. Um, that, that's just how they do it. I don't know that it's written down in the bylaw somewhere.
I don't think so. Work Health does the same thing, you know?
Um, I personally, I personally don't think that works for planning board, because I don't think, besides actually me and my term, I typ- typically people don't finish five-year terms. Like, people are in and out a lot, you know, they come and go, so I don't feel like it'll be a common thing that somebody's hitting their fifth year. You know, I, I kind of feel like we'll never have that situation. And also, I think, um, I think it's good in like three-year groups, you know? I'm thinking back to like Doug Story was chairman for many years, and then John Keen for a few years, David Sway for a few years, now I've done it for like a year and a half. Seems like, I mean, it seems like it works good to have like that kind of, um, I don't know, it's, it takes like a year just to get into it.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? Because, but, but if, if, if the board wants to do that, or if they don't feel like I'm doing a good job, that's fine too, you know? So I, I mean, whatever the board really wants, I mean, in general, do you have some thoughts?
No, I mean, it has, I've lost some thoughts about a lot of it. No, it has nothing to do with whether we think you're doing a good job or not, it's just, a lot of boards just find it, you know, just keeps the board a little more energized, a little more, you know, and you kind of, you know, whether we do it, you know, whether we by agreeing to it, you know, third year, fourth year of the term, whatever, you know, or just, you say you did it this year, who wants it next year? But you kind of, I mean, we're all up to speed on, on, on the issues, so it's, you know, it's not like, you know.
That's true.
It's not like, you know, somebody just got elected and we're gonna have them.
No, that's true.
Be, be, be chairman. You know, I mean, I brought it up just because it's been talked about in the past, and just, you know, more, more just asking whether we wanted to pursue it or not. Um, I mean, I guess one question is, do we want to do this without Mike and Danielle here? I, I mean, you know.
We could wait, I guess.
Yeah, I would, I would like to have.
Yeah, we can wait. That's a good point.
Okay, I, 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 well, I, I will move that we continue. Erica's chairman until our next meeting.
Okay. Great, thanks.
That's good.
All in favor?
Yeah.
I don't think that needs to be voted. I don't think. It's just, it's the formality of, you know.
Yeah. I mean, typically, well, typically the formality is after the, you know, election, then we reorganize the board.
Yeah.
It technically should be this meeting, so I think it's good that we have that on our record.
Yeah, okay, well, do we, so you motioned.
And then Peter seconded.
On my favor?
Aye.
All right, I got two more weeks.
At least, yeah.
Yeah.
And Mike still wants to be on the board, right?
Yeah, I know he does.
I know he's been really busy, but I just.
Well, so, I'm rookie two. Rookie two's games end at seven thirty. He's minors. Minors games go, we only get like three or four innings, they get five or six.
Okay.
So that's why he was going to probably eight thirty.
Okay.
Although he could, and he have two and a half hours.
Which is a carry?
Who will be chairman?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.